And ask for public comment. So anybody in the public wish to comment on today's agenda? I'll check on Zoom. Folks on Zoom can use the raise hand function.
Yeah, nobody's got their hands raised. This is an interviewee. I'm not certain. He might just be joining in remotely for participating, watching the meeting. I'm not sure.
Yep. Okay, well, seeing them, go ahead and close general public comment and we'll move to our one item, which is board committee and commission interviews. And so with that, we do have our first interviewee here, Mr. Pauli. So Mr. Pauli, why don't you join us up front? And I'll just give folks a heads up as you're making your way up that we've pasted the questions, the interview questions here. So we're just going to be reading along as a script, but it's easier for visual. We have that available to you. And hearing a little bit of echo. And I'll just go ahead and actually, Gina, why don't you kick us off?
Good afternoon, everyone here in the public and online. Thank you for joining us and welcome. Thank you for being here today, Justin, Justin Pauli, and that actually for benefit of the public here and online, I'll just share that it's Mr. Justin Pauli here from District Two. And just want to thank you for your interest in serving the community through one of the city of Monterey's boards, commissions, or committees. My name is Gino Garcia, Vice Mayor, and I'm here with our Mayor Tyler Williamson. And we truly appreciate the time and thought you've put into applying and your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. This is a public meeting and we'll be conducting brief interviews with each applicant. Each interview will last about 15 minutes and we have six questions we'd like to ask you. To help us stay on schedule and make sure we cover everything, we'd appreciate it if you could keep your responses succinct and focused. So with that, I'll pass it over to Mr. Mayor.
Perfect. And then I will just add that Mr. Pauli is applying to continue on the ARC. So just for folks. I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. For Planning Commission. Current member of the ARC, putting his name forward for Planning Commission. So just for folks in the public to have a heads up on. And with that, I'll go ahead and go into the first question. How did you first hear about this volunteer opportunity and why do you think you should be chosen to serve on this committee?
Yeah, so I've been serving on the Architectural Review Committee for several years in different capacities. I have been the Chair, excuse me, the Chair of that committee for a year. And now I'm back to a regular serving member. And so obviously, I'm intimately familiar with how the decision process in the city works and how things go through the ARC and can be appealed to the Planning Commission. And I follow the goings ons in the city fairly closely. And I think additionally, as an architect, I'm well aware of what a planning commission does and that every city has one. And that's how I'm intimately familiar with not only this planning commission, but also being able to compare it to the County of Monterey, the City of Carmel, the City of Pacific Grove, all planning commissions that I've interacted with. But I think it's been helpful in my experience on the ARC as well.
Thank you for that.
Next question, can you share one volunteer experience and how it affected you? What did you learn from it? And how might that experience shape your approach if selected?
I think the most relevant volunteer experience would be my time spent on the ARC. I also sit on the board of the local chapter of the American Institute of Architects, but I think in terms of relevance to this position, it would be the time I've spent volunteering on the ARC. And in terms of how it how it might that experience shape your approach if selected, I think it's been really good to see the things that staff is spending their time on in terms of their presentations to the ARC and the Planning Commission. And I also think it's important that that feedback be a two-way street, not necessarily in terms of individual projects, but how members of both the Architectural Review Committee and the Planning Commission can work with staff in the future, I would hope to somewhat streamline the whole process and make it easier for applicants and make the use of staff's time more efficient. I just think that a lot of the things that we see regularly in the ARC could be staff level decisions. And I think that would empower them. And I think it would sort of free up the ARC and the Planning Commission to be looking at more important things.
I don't know if that's coming from me or if that's coming. Can we try to maybe turn this volume down a little bit? I think it might just be some reverb from the room. Yeah, let's try it. Thank you. I appreciate that. I think it's off to you. Thank you for. Or is it me? Sorry. Behind myself.
I think it's proximity.
Yep, I think that helps. And I don't even think we actually even needed that loud. I mean, if there's issue in hearing, just let us know. But okay, so question three, have you ever attended many, any of the meetings for the, for the Planning Commission? Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be honest that probably the well, I guess the housing project was a city council meeting, so not a planning commission meeting. So the, the last Planning Commission that I attended in full would have been for the conference center and I was actually I was pleasantly surprised and impressed with the demeanor of the commission at the time and their support for the project. And to me, it felt like sort of the ideal of what a process like that should be and that everyone had opinions, but the overall general consensus in the room was how can we move a good project forward? And obviously, we always need to keep our eyes peeled for bad projects. But I think in general that most people come into these rooms with good intentions and they put a lot of work and thought into what they've done. And staff has put a lot of time into what they've done in terms of reviewing it. So I think it's incumbent on the Planning Commission to be educated, informed, and move the process forward in the most expeditious manner possible.
Thank you for it.
So each board and commission has a regular meeting schedule. So does your schedule allow you to commit to attending these meetings consistently? And for the Planning Commission, they meet on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month at four and seven PM. And with an added note here that when the Planning Commission takes on ARC duties, meetings may run a little bit longer into the evening.
Yes, my office is literally a block away. I don't anticipate being at the meetings as being a problem.
Awesome. And then back to me for question five, these board and commissions often bring together residents with different viewpoints. Can you share how you approach how you approach collaboration and respectful discussion when opinions differ?
So as an architect, we're essentially in the service industry. So a lot of times we're presenting to these commissions, a lot of times we're presenting to clients, a lot of times we're discussing projects with neighbors. So we're dealing with people who may be for or against the work that we do. And in addition to that, we are the people on a development where the, the role, our role in the development process is to be the team leader. And so a lot of times we're working with the engineers, we're working with the surveyors, we're working with the landscape architects, and our role as the architect is sort of to keep all those people on the same page and working towards that goal of getting the project built. So I think in that sense, working with all the different stakeholders in the, in the projects that we present to these commissions and also in terms of managing the own internal team for our clients, that's pretty good experience in terms of working in a collaborative environment.
So we're getting into the last question here. You've touched on this a little bit, but if you would elaborate, what unique perspective, skills, or experiences do you think you would bring to this committee? And also, what would you hope to accomplish during your term if appointed?
So I've spent a good chunk of my career on the other side of the desk. And I can tell you that out there in the world, the sentiment towards these commissions is not a positive one. In general, they view it as one of many hurdles, time consuming and financially strenuous hurdles in order to get their projects done. It would be my hope that we could sort of evolve that notion for the people that come in here and let them know that we're here to work with them and we're part of the city and we want to collaborate with them and get their projects done. But at the same time, you know, we want to see them done well. But I think I just think my perspective of being, spending so much time on the other side of the days is unique in that I know, I know what a bad board, how that can be detrimental to people's perceptions of not just the Planning Commission, but as the government as a whole. And I think now more than ever, it's important that people have faith in their government and have faith in that the process is working for them and not against them.
Awesome. All right. Well, I think I'm good with any follow-ups. So thank you very much for your time and your interest in serving the city of Monterey. We truly appreciate the effort you've made to be here and your willingness to contribute to our community. City staff will be following up with you after, after we complete all the interviews. Our plan is to announce the appointments and selections at the November 18th city council meeting. So thank you and wishing you all the best.
Thanks, Stefan.
Thanks. So good morning and thank you for being here today for your, and your interest in serving the community through one of our city of Monterey boards, commissions, or committees. And I will clarify for everybody that, is it Melin? Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Uh, Maylin, yes.
Maylin, thank you for that. Maylin is has put her name in the hat for Museum and Cultural Arts Commission. I was looking for. District Four, thank you. Where are you saying that at? Oh, I guess I could do that too. Okay, so I'm going to get it together here. So thank you for your interest in, in, in that commission. My name is Tyler Williamson, Mayor, and I'm joined today by Vice Mayor Gino Garcia. We truly appreciate the time and thought you've put into applying and your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. This is a public meeting and we'll be conducting brief interviews with each applicant. Each interview will last about 15 minutes and we have six questions we'd like to ask. To help us stay on schedule and make sure we cover everything, we'd appreciate it if you keep your responses succinct and focused. With that, let's go ahead and get started.
Thank you, Maylin, for being here this afternoon. First question, how did you first hear about this volunteer opportunity and why do you think you should be chosen to serve on this committee?
The first time I became aware of this volunteer opportunity was during one of the neighborhood improvement meetings for Oak Grove. I'm very passionate about being a Monterey resident. I've lived here since 2014. I met my husband here while he was going to the Naval Postgraduate School and moved around for the last eight years. And we love Monterey so much that we decided once he separated from the military to return to this area, it's home for us. And I'm just very passionate about arts, history, and music on the peninsula and bringing that and promoting that to our residents.
Great, thank you.
Question two, can you share one volunteer experience and how it affected you? What did you learn from it? And how might that experience shape your approach if selected?
One of the most impactful volunteer experiences I had was while I was at the University of Oregon. I was a part of the Chinese Philanthropic Association where we were raising money for cultural awareness, promoting Asian art, Asian culture, food. And it was so impactful for me because it just allowed me to see how people can bond and learn about other cultures, learn about each other, tolerance, and also just enjoy through that process. And, you know, during my very formative college years, just seeing the, the joy and connection of community was just very powerful and very strong. And I think it's so important to, to bring all of us together.
So next question, have you ever attended any of the meetings for this board? And actually, that's, yeah, that's the first part of the question.
So next question, have you ever attended any of the meetings for this board? However, I've watched a number of the city council meetings digitally and it really sparked a excitement for me just seeing the collaborative dialogue between our local government and our residents. And I'm just so excited and passionate about, you know, watching democracy go down. So although I haven't been able to participate in that board's meeting specifically, I have seen a number of the city council meetings digitally.
And in terms of Museums and Cultural Arts Commission and, and the content that's covered there and addressed there during their meetings, what, what sparked the interest in, in, in terms of the work that's being done on that board?
You know, I'm very passionate about the diverse fabric of, of culture that makes up the Monterey Peninsula's history. I think it's so important to preserve that. And I think it's so important to promote that, particularly to our young residents, to bring up the next generation of people that are going to continue the preservation of history and the continuation of arts here in our community. So that's what I'm very passionate about is finding policy and promoting, you know, events that will really get our young people engaged in, in our local government and in our local culture.
Thank you.
Okay, the next question, each board or commission has a regular meeting schedule. Does your schedule allow you to commit to attending these meetings consistently? For the Monterey Cultural Arts Commission, they meet the first Thursday of each month at four.
I do not foresee any issues with being able to attend this, the commission meetings on a consistent basis.
Thank you.
So these boards and commissions often bring together residents with different viewpoints. Can you share how you approach collaboration and respectful discussion when opinions differ?
Yes, I, I work in the service industry and, you know, difference of opinions can be difficult. I am, have been in the service industry for 10 years. So I feel I'm very good at finding ways to understand where the other party is coming from, de-escalating if necessary, and trying to foster a collaborative environment where everybody feels heard and appreciated and valued.
Okay, the next question is, I think this is your last question here. So what unique perspective, skills, or experiences do you think you would bring to this committee? What would you hope to accomplish during your term if, if appointed?
I, I think I bring a number of unique skills and experiences to the table. Studying international studies at the University of Oregon, I think was the start of that. I was in a language program funded by the Department of Defense called the Chinese Flagship Program, which allowed me to study and travel through a generous grant. I know that a grant is also part of this commission. So I really would like to be a part of that. Grant was such impactful part of my life and being able to enjoy that. I would also say my time moving around with my husband in the military has allowed me to enjoy so many unique and beautiful communities to see how they participate in local government and celebrating their cultural heritage and their history. And I would love to bring all that perspective to the beautiful Monterey Peninsula and celebrate the beautiful and unique place that we have here.
All right, thank you so much. Those are all the questions. Thank you for your time and your interest in serving the city of Monterey. We truly appreciate the effort you've made to be present here and your willingness to contribute to our community. Staff will be following up with you after we complete all the interviews and our plan is to announce the appointments and selections at the November 18th city council meeting. So thank you so much again, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Take care.
Do we have anybody else online?
Nope.
Okay. Do you want to join us now? If this taking care of you. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good.
Good to see you.
Yeah, likewise, always.
Good afternoon, Linda. Thank you for being here. And for the public, this is Linda Rath from Council District One. And here applying for the Historic Preservation Commission. Again, good afternoon. Thank you for being here and for your interest in serving the community through one of the city's boards, commissions, or committees. My name is Gino Garcia, Vice Mayor, and I'm here with Tyler Williamson, our mayor. And we truly appreciate the time and thought you've put into applying and your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. This is a public meeting and we'll be conducting brief interviews with each applicant. And each interview will last about 15 minutes. We have six questions we'd like to ask. To help us stay on schedule and make sure we cover everything, we'd appreciate it if you could keep your responses succinct and focused. And with that, I'll pass it over to the mayor.
Okay, how did you first hear about this volunteer opportunity and why do you think you should be chosen to serve on, or continue serving on this committee?
Okay, well, I would, originally I was on the Architectural Review Committee. And I was recruited for that after applying for HPC. So I was on that committee for two terms. And then when an opening came up with HPC, I decided to try for that because I'm really interested in history and protecting the historic resources of the city. And what was it? Let's see. Was there another part of that question?
This wasn't announced, it was announced before you came in. So all the questions are here. So we're, we're right here. We can repeat the question as well.
Oh, that's okay. I can read it. And I think I'd be good on the committee because I've been on it for one term. I've had a lot of really great training, extensive training on historic preservation. A lot of it supported by the city, but also some on my own as well. So I enjoy being on the committee and working with the other committee members and the public and the city to make sure that our resources are protected.
All right, I'll take question number two. Can you share one volunteer experience and how it affected you? What did you learn from it? And how might that experience shape your approach if selected?
Okay, yes, I'm a volunteer at the Point Sarah Lighthouse or Light Station down in Big Sur. It's part of the state park. And it's also on the National Register of Historic Sites. So everything we do up there has to be within the NPS standards. And we're doing a lot of restoration work and we also, I also do tours to promote the, the park and the preservation of it. So I've learned a lot. In previous jobs, I've also been responsible for historic sites. I think I get, I'll get to that later, but yeah, that's I think that the way that it shapes my ability to be on the commission is that just the information that we've received on CEQA and, and the NPS standards and a lot of it applies to the historic buildings and resources in Monterey.
All righty. And with that, we'll go to question three. Have you ever attended any of the meetings for the Historic Preservation Commission, which I, I think it's safe to say the answer to that is yes. What stood out to you about the, about the discussions there or the way they operate?
I think that there's a good mix of people on the commission with a lot of different backgrounds and education. And I think that allows us to make good, well-rounded decisions on a variety of items. I think everybody on the commission listens well to the public and, and takes the recommendations from the city. And then we try to come up with the best solutions to any questions that might come up.
So you're familiar with the regular meeting schedule.
And then when an opening came up with HPC, I decided to try for that because I'm really interested in history and protecting the historic resources of the city. And what's it? Let's see. Was there another part of that question?
This wasn't announced. It was announced before you came in, so all the questions are here. So we're we're right here. We can repeat the question as well.
Oh, that's okay. I can read it. And I think I'd be good on the committee because I've been on it for one term. I've had a lot of really great training, extensive training on historic preservation. A lot of it supported by the city, but also some on my own as well. So I enjoy being on the committee and working with the other committee members and the public and the city to make sure that our resources are protected.
All right, I'll take question number two. Can you share one volunteer experience and how it affected you? What did you learn from it? And how might that experience shape your approach if selected?
Okay, um, yes, I'm a volunteer at the Point Sarah Lighthouse or Light Station down in Big Sur. It's part of the state park and it's also on the National Register of Historic Sites, so everything we do up there has to be within the NPS standards. And we're doing a lot of restoration work and we also I also do tours to promote the the park and the preservation of it. So I've learned a lot. In previous jobs, I've also been responsible for historic sites. I think I get I'll get to that later, but yeah, that's. I think that the way that it shapes my ability to be on the commission is that just the information that we've received on CEQA and and the NPS standards and a lot of it applies to the historic buildings and resources in Monterey.
Alrighty. And with that, we'll go to question three. Have you ever attended any of the meetings for the Historic Preservation Commission, which I I think it's safe to say the answer to that is yes.
Yeah.
What stood out to you about the about the discussions there or the way they operate?
I think that there's a good mix of people on the commission with a lot of different backgrounds and education. And I think that allows us to make good, well-rounded decisions on a variety of of items. I think everybody on the commission listens well to the public and and takes the recommendations from the city, and then we try to come up with the best solutions to any questions that might come up.
So you're familiar with the regular meeting schedule. Still looking forward, does your schedule allow you to commit to attending these meetings consistently? And just as a reminder, or for the public, the schedule is second Thursday of each month at 4:00 PM?
Yes.
All right.
Right. And then hop back to me for the next question. These boards and commissions often bring together residents with different viewpoints. Sorry, making sure I'm on the right question. Can you share how you approach collaboration and respectful discussion when opinions differ?
Yes, that's occurred a number of times, both in the Architectural Review Committee and the HPC. And I think that the way I approach things is I'll read all the information that's sent to us before the meeting from the city, and then I'll listen to any of the the public and also the applicants to get their perspectives and viewpoints. And then we discuss everything if there's a difference of opinion, which sometimes there is, and and then we come up with the best solution.
So what unique perspective, skills, or experiences do you think you would bring to the committee? And what would you hope to accomplish during your term if appointed?
My background is with California State Parks. I was a a field ranger, a supervisor, and also superintendent. And I worked in a number of different parks, but also including historic parks, including San Juan Batista and Fremont Peak, and also Fort Ross up north. And some other parks had resources that were historic, but they weren't historic parks. So as a superintendent, I had to manage the parks and and make decisions on what we did with them, how we protected them, getting resources and and money to protect them. So I have a good background in that. And what I would like to accomplish is just continue to be on the commission and and make the best decisions for the city and and the resources. I live in a 100-year-old house and it's just a vernacular cottage, but, you know, some of those vernacular cottages cottages are very important in my feeling. So I like to protect what we can. And that also benefits the community because when you have historic resources, that increases the value of of the properties, all the properties, yeah.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Linda. Uh, thank you very much for your time and your interest in serving the city of Monterey. We truly appreciate the effort you've made to be here and your willingness to contribute to our community. City staff will be following up with, after we complete the interviews. Our plan is to announce the appointments and selections at the November 18th city council meeting. So thanks again and wishing you all the best. It's good to see you.
You're good to see you too. Thank you.
Linda and I go back to the ARC days, so it's good to see you. Take care. All right, up next we have Patrick Trigenza. He has 11 minutes to be here, so we'll just hang out until then. And there's more to this discussion that I will share with you outside of a Okay. Outside of a microphone, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm always unconnected somehow. Hello, good sir.
Hey, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
This is not a bribe.
From Diane, we did a big photograph, photo shoot for pears. So this is a box of assorted pears. Nice. Can I can I open it up for open up for folks? I'll set these over here. So if anybody wants to grab some pears.
Where are these pears from?
They're from Washington.
They look yummy, actually. I might eat one here.
Oh, you can stay here with us. You're going to be sitting.
All right.
The state I assume now. That was a good one. That was very timely. Tyler. Hi, I'm sorry. How are you? We're going to get here, get it together here professionally. All right, I'm gonna kick us off. Just gonna go into it. We're following a script. It's in front of you here. It also has the interview question, so we have Patrick Trigenza here. He is currently serving on the Architecture.
No, I'm not. I I resigned back in the spring.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
I was on the board for committee for five or six years.
He's so a recent ARC member.
Well, it doesn't exist anymore anyway.
Technically does, up until the council makes the final decision on it and is applying for the Planning Commission. He also lives in District One. And with that, good morning, sir, and welcome. Thank you for being here today for for your interest in serving the community through one of the city of Monterey's boards, commissions, or committees. I'm Tyler Williamson, Mayor, and I'm joined by our Vice Mayor, Gino Garcia. We truly appreciate the time and thought you've put into applying and your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. This is a public meeting and we'll be conducting brief interviews with each applicant. Each interview will be last about 15 minutes. We have six questions we'd like to ask to help us stay on schedule and make sure we cover everything. We'd appreciate it if you could keep your responses succinct and focused. And with that, let's go ahead and get started.
Great.
I'll start off with question number one. Uh, how did you first hear about this volunteer opportunity and why do you think you should be chosen to serve on this committee?
Um, I enjoyed my time with the ARC. Bob Bluth is a friend and neighbor of mine. I know we're in the same district. But he reached out to me and said, hey, why don't you put, you know, throw your hat in the ring for planning because I think you'd be an asset to that group. And I I said, well, I, you know, I'm already doing ARC and I've got some other volunteering that I'm doing and I'm still working full time and all that. And I said, but maybe when the, you know, the time arises. And then I decided to back off of ARC last spring. And then I I think I did, uh, I did the application back then and didn't hear. And so here I am. So basically Bob and and the opportunity I knew was it came up and I've been talking to Tyler about it, so.
Alrighty. And the next question goes to me. Can you share one volunteer experience and how it affected you? What did you learn from it and how might that experience shape your approach if selected?
You know, I was just thinking about this because the thing I'm kind of proudest of being on the ARC, it was I could talk specifically about the project. It was a at Lake Elstero, there's two underground Caterpillar diesel engines that pump the water out to the ocean whenever it floods, because it all floods there. And it was, I think, one of the first ARC things that I was when I was on the committee. And the city was Andreas Baer, who was the engineer, came and they wanted to rip out those things because they were unsafe and blah blah. And then build an above-ground electric pump plant with a 10-foot cyclone fence, which to me didn't make any sense because that's the window in the bay. And what we have now is you can't see it at all. It's underground. And the ARC voted for it and Bob Bluth and I both said nay and and it passed. And so then Bob and I talked and we said, let's just appeal it as citizens. So we actually paid the $500, you know, fee to appeal an ARC decision, brought it to the planning. We both spoke at the Planning Commission and they were like, how come this didn't come to planning? This is a ridiculous project. This is stupid. Why? Why did we? Why weren't we part of this? And so it really felt good that, you know, I think that the ARC was like, this is a city project. The city knows what it's doing. Let's just trust the city and just let them have what they want. And it was like, well, no, no, let's slow the whole process down and like, think about this. And so anyway, that's always kind of stuck in my mind is something I was really proud of. Not that I'm against this, you know, anything the city does, but you know, it was like it just it seemed like they wanted us to rubber stamp it. And I was like, no, let's let really, let's really talk about it.
So what aspects of, or maybe let me back up. Have you attended recent meetings of the the Planning Commission meetings?
I'm trying to think of the last time I've been. I've been to numerous council meetings and planning commission meetings. You know, when I'm concerned about certain subjects and it's been it's been a minute since I've been to planning commission. I mean, like I I just said that we we had to appeal that that pump plant and we came to the council or the planning for that. It's been a while. But I I know housing is front and center and I'm all about, you know, trying to get cars off of Highway One and And, you know, finding, I know the state has mandated this, this housing, you know, unreachable hurdle, but you know, I know that that's on the forefront. So I'd like to start getting more involved with that and showing up for these meetings.
So am I hearing correctly in terms of the aspects of the committee's work that interest you the most revolve around infrastructure?
Well, it's, it's the whole picture. It's, it's looking at the waterfront master plan, making sure that we're making good decisions with the, the future of the city. And that there's some sort of cohesive plan. I was, I was really upset when I have a, I'm a boat owner and I have a sailboat at the marina. And when the, you know, they just ripped out 170 year old cypress trees and redid that whole parking lot. And I was like, oh, it'll be better. It's got to be better because they talked to some, you know, traffic person in Sacramento and it's going to be better. It's going to make more sense. And I really don't think it does. I think it's worse. And we, we, we lost all these beautiful mature cypress trees and it just became another parking lot. And so that was like, how come, and I talked to Kim Cole about this. How come this wasn't, you know, this didn't come to the, a vote that the citizens weren't, you know, there weren't signs up. And she goes, well, it was, we didn't have to. It just, we had the funding and we, and it was funded by the state and it was about mitigating runoff into the ocean. And I, I get that. But it was just like a really good example of let's just hire, you know, Sacramento contractor to, you know, to come up with a plan that doesn't live here. It doesn't know the history, doesn't use that marina parking lot every day like we do. And I just thought there was a really missed opportunity to make it much better. And the flow is kind of wanky now. It's like, I don't think it's safer at all. So that's the kind of thing I just hate to see people just trying to get the projects off their table. Like, you know, Todd Muck is a good friend of mine from the Tamsi and, and, and he, you know, a lot of the times I have complaints to him. We're, we're pretty good friends. And he says, you know, Patrick, sometimes it's just the worst, least, the least worst options is what we have to go with. You know, we have to have all this money that's floating around and we have to use it by a certain date and it's always a compromise. And I get that, but I really want to make sure that people are conscious about that. And that, that they're looking for solutions and ways to not slow the process down, but just do, do things in a more congruent way that makes sense for the whole, like the big picture. Me once again. Are you taking the minutes?
I'm trying to take good notes. I could also just go back and watch it since it's, I know.
Yeah.
But it's my practice that I've always done. So it's like feeling good. Okay. Each board or commission has a regular, regular meeting schedule. Does your schedule allow you to commit to attending these meetings consistently? And for a planning commission, they are the second and fourth Tuesday of each month at four and seven. And then I heard affirmation. And then just to note, when the planning commission takes on the ARC duties, those meetings may run long, longer into the evening.
No problem.
Okay, awesome.
I'm self-employed and soon to be retired. So. And Tuesdays don't conflict with sailing. So.
Which is essential. Do you, completely off topic here, but do you sail like when it's like bad weather or?
We almost always go out unless it's, it's really, really like too windy and like there's white caps. If it's like a gale warning, we, we, but it's complicated. The race committee can't say, we're, we're going to call the race. It has to be up to the sailors. Because if the race committee doesn't call a race and somebody gets hurt, then the yacht club is at liability. So.
Okay. Thank you for that. Random.
All right. Question number five. These boards and commissions often bring together residents with different viewpoints. Can you share how you approach collaboration and respectful discussion when opinions differ?
I've been, I served, I was on the yacht club board for six years. The Vela Club Monterey was on their board for six years, ARC for five or six years. And I get that there's differing opinions. And I, I just, sometimes I've been at ARC meetings where I was like, oh gosh, you know, I see somebody in the crowd that's probably going to want to talk about this project. And, and then I listen and I'm like, oh, I'm so glad I had an open mind about that because she really did change my mind on this one issue or that. So I'm, I'm pretty, let's say, open minded when it comes to, you know, and collaborating with people. I'm a Libra. I don't know if that helps, you know? So.
Yeah, I'm all into the Zodiac.
Yeah, I, I, I like to find consensus. You know, and I know that change is sometimes a four letter word to some people. And, but if it's, if it's well thought out and planned and everybody, you get everybody on board, you build a consensus, I think it's, there's a good way, there's a right and a wrong way to do it for sure.
Okay. And then your last question is what unique perspective, skills or experiences do you think you would bring to this committee? What would you do? What would you hope to accomplish during your term if, if appointed?
Well, I'm, I'm a native, second generation Monterey County native. I grew up here. I love the city. I love the surrounding area. I just want to make sure that we're making good choices. I know like Window on the Bay, that was Mayor Canelio's, you know, vision and the conference center. And when, you know, Mayor Minnie wanted to put the tunnel in, they used to call it Minnie's ditch, you know? Because like this is the stupidest thing you've been yet now. It's kind of like, oh, without that, it would be, it would be weird. So I like to point to those, you know, projects that really helped shape what Monterey is and keep us from. I still, like every time I'm on, on the bay, I just curse the embassy suites. Like, why did they build that? You know, it's like this, this, this thing that just sticks out like a sore thumb. And you can see it from every vantage point and it's too big. And, you know, that was a city of seaside, but you know, we're stuck with it. So I just don't want to get stuck with anything, you know, I want to help guide that. I'm a, I'm a visual artist. I'm a commercial photographer. So I have a certain aesthetic. I've studied art, art history and architecture. So those are the things that I'm passionate about.
Awesome. Thank you, Patrick. I'm good.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time and your interest in serving the city. Staff will be following up with you after we complete all interviews and our plan is to announce the appointments and selections at the November 18 city council meeting.
Great.
Thanks so much.
Great. Great to meet you. And I was just going to say, I've always got along really well with the staff, Fernanda, Chris, Matthew, Christie, Kim. I mean, not that that means anything, but.
No, but guys.
I know, I know them as friends.
They'll say it does.
See you guys.
Good to see you.
We try this.
So this was public meeting, is it? You know?
I'm going to shake your hand as soon as I.
They brought you guys.
I appreciate it. It makes me feel like I'm sitting back in front of your house.
There you go.
Do you want me to?
With good conversation, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Go for it. Either one. Yeah, either one works for me.
Welcome.
Oh, and it's good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So good afternoon. We have Caroline Elliott from District Four applying for NCIP Alternative Del Monte Beach. So good afternoon and welcome. Thank you for being here today and your interest in serving the community through the city of Monterey's boards, commissions, or committees. My name is Gino Garcia, Vice Mayor. I'm here with our mayor Tyler Williamson and we truly appreciate the time and thought you've put into applying and, and your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. So there's a public meeting and we'll be conducting brief, brief interviews with each applicant. And each interview will last about 15 minutes and we have six questions we'd like to ask and they're also posted right there in front of you. So you can refer to them. And to help us stay on schedule and make sure we cover everything, we'd appreciate it if you could keep your responses succinct and focused. And with that, I'll pass it over to our mayor.
I will start us off with the first question. How did you first hear about this volunteer opportunity and why did you think you should be chosen to serve on this committee?
I, we moved into Del, Del Monte Air Beach neighborhood in 2012. And was always involved with the little neighborhood committee, not really realizing what it was in the beginning. So just the general interest in making the neighborhood as positive as it can be. I am a new American, a Canadian originally. And I chose to become an American citizen because I think it's important to have a good voice in politics. I don't have a heck of a lot of experience in it, but I feel as a citizen, it's important to pay attention. So then as things progressed in getting to know the community more and more, I recognize that Jamie Fields is a very big leader in the NCIP. I have participated in dune restoration in our neighborhood, dune cleanups. You know, generally things that make the neighborhood a little nicer. So in regards to this committee, when it was last open, I did for a very temporary moment, pay attention to what was going on. I'd say that was about four years ago when the alternative position was empty. And so I did get a perspective. I attended a couple of the meetings and waited through the gazillion projects that there were. So I do have a sense of what's going on. And then I just, I really decided I needed to show up just to have good representation for our neighborhood. I recognize that we are one of many in District Four, but we are very much a window of Monterey for everybody who comes. You know, there's a lot of communities that people, the average person does not go into, but the average person and tourists come to our neighborhood. So I think as much as our neighborhood has a loud voice, and sometimes it may seem a little too loud when it's part of a few different neighborhoods. We have a different perspective in our neighborhood because so many other people from other neighborhoods come to our neighborhood for the beach. And so I think it's important that we have a strong representation and that's why I put my name forward as the alternative.
Thank you.
Can you share one volunteer experience and how it affected you? What, what did you learn from it and how might that experience shape your approach if selected?
Most of my volunteer work has been around healthcare. And when I was in my working world, I'm retired now. I had student volunteers work in the hospital to gain hours for, so I oversaw the volunteers as part of my nurse educator role for them going into clinical areas. Presently I am part of a volunteer for our nonprofit Healing Partners, the Central Coast, that provides energy healing for cancer patients going through acute care. So I'm involved with their, as them as an organization. I think it's really important that you treat volunteers well. They don't have to be here and they provide an awful lot of very good perspective and a lot, they do a lot of work. Just generally the recognition of the importance of being a volunteer and the importance of treating them well. Giving them their recognition.
Thank you for it. I'll go on to the next question. Number three is, have you ever attended any of the meetings for the board, commission, or committee you're applying for? And you kind of answered this question earlier. So given that you've paid some level of attention, what stood out to you about their, their discussions or the way they operated?
Yes, I have attended some, I have never come to city hall. Leslie, I wanted to show up today just to kind of get more of a perspective. But I have watched them on Zoom. You know, NCIP is such a contentious issue right now, and I feel for everybody involved in that. Hoping leadership makes good decisions. So the question is, how would I contribute to that meeting, to the meeting process? Is that?
So, and I, I should have mentioned this in the beginning, but we also have them printed here. So that's helpful.
This is number three?
Yes. And then it's the if yes.
I can't see anything really specific stood out in discussion. Sometimes I feel like in general, there's some disrespectful way of communicating amongst the group and I don't feel that's appropriate. I feel like that should be controlled by the leadership. I think the work that they're doing is broad and and worthy for the small projects that there or large projects. Big, but that's about it for that one.
All right. So each board and commission has a regular meeting schedule. Does your schedule allow you to commit to attending these meetings consistently? And for NCIP, their schedule?
It does. However, on that note, as much as I will be involved, whether I'm chosen or not, I'd like to put my support behind George McNeely, who is, who you interviewed on Friday. He's also from our community. I think he just has a little more enthusiasm and commitment than I do. I feel like this position should be filled by somebody who wants to be in the position. And I would not want to see the position empty. Leslie, in April, when I applied, I felt like it was important, but I, since then I've heard that George is involved. And he is such a young go getter type fellow that I, I would like to put my support behind him. That said, yes, if I was chosen, I would, I, my schedule allows it.
Five, these board and commissions often bring together residents with different, different viewpoints. Can you share how you approach collaboration and respectful discussion when opinions differ?
Good question. Listening. Respectful. You know, all the principles of good communication. I feel this makes me feel not you did, you know? Conflict. If you have a conflict, address the person first. Not go to the head honcho first, but try to deal with it on a one to one level. Refuse to, you know, healthy boundaries, refuse to continue a conversation that is looking for a better word than abusive, but disrespectful.
What unique perspective, skills or experiences do you think you would bring to this committee? And what would you hope to accomplish during your term if appointed?
Unique perspectives and skills. Well, I'm really bad at the computer. I think I'm supposed to say positive things first, but that is a challenge. So that is a consideration, Leslie, George. But I think general, just a interested, committed person to be involved, willing. And then, you know, what would I like to be involved? I would just champion some of our bigger projects that need to be done. Need to be, I would also be a voice, like some of the projects that have been done, for example, the umbrella at the tot lot. Unfortunate how that was placed. The, the sun, the shade it provides is on the road, not on the picnic table. Like it was not considered well as to the placement of that and the sun direction in that and where it's going to provide shade. So something like that, if you can, if we can, if the public can be a voice ahead of time, I would be interested in being a reasonable voice there. The boardwalk right now is dangerously, is dangerously deteriorating. That I think is a consideration that needs to be pushed forward. It's a litigation issue right now. It's deteriorated. It's deteriorated even in the last two months. Super sweet to see the work being done on the fence. And my personal project that I put forward is official standardized cigarette butt dispensers receptacles. That's the one I always kind of say, hey, hey, this is my project. Because the cigarette butts, you know, I don't need to go on about the environmental impact of cigarettes in, in the ocean. That's, I'm sure you know that. But that's the one that I always kind of say, hey, that's what I think is important.
Awesome. Good. So thank you very much for your time and your interest in serving in the city of Monterey. We truly appreciate the effort you've made to be here and your willingness to contribute to our community. City staff will be following up with you after we complete all the interviews. Our plan is to announce the appointments and selections at the November eighteenth city council meeting. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All the best.
If not selected, I am still going to be a voice bugging you guys.
Absolutely. As you should. That's how the process works.
Good hope.
So.
Thanks a lot.
It's a pleasure.
Alrighty.
Yeah, it's good to see you. Thanks again for the sparkling. Little sparkle, sparkle. Next up, we have Thomas. It is fresh. Hi, sir. How are you?
Thank you. It's good to see you.
Good to see you again.
Absolutely.
Hi, I'm Tom Bruno. We haven't met.
Am I starting this off? Okay, I can't keep track. Okay. Good morning and welcome. Thank you for being here today, for your interest in serving the community through the, one of City of Monterey's boards, commissions or committees. Oh, and I'm already starting off bad. So Thomas is applying for Measure PNS. District one, thank you. Okay. So I'm Tyler Williamson, Mayor, joined by Vice Mayor Gino Garcia. We truly appreciate the time that you, and the time and thought you put into applying and your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. This is a public meeting and we'll be conducting brief interviews with each applicant. Each interview will last about fifteen minutes. We'll have six questions. To help us stay on schedule and make sure we cover everything, we'd appreciate it if you could keep your responses succinct and focused. With that, let's go ahead and get started.
All right. All right. Question number one, and good afternoon again. How did you first hear about this volunteer opportunity? And why do you think you should be chosen to serve on this committee? And also just so you know, the questions are posted right in front of you, just so that you can refer to them at any point.
Well, I heard about it by Googling the city's website and seeing that there are a number of committees. And there was an indication as well about vacancies. And this one in particular, is, deals with oversight. And I, as you know, Tyler, I worked at the postgraduate school for many years and in the Department of National Security Affairs. And I had an awful lot of research and work and publications on intelligence agencies. And the main, the main way that intelligence agencies are kept under control, if any, is through oversight. So I'm very big on just the whole concept of oversight, that someone is paying attention and, and has another set of eyes basically to keep track of things. And anyone who lives around here and drives around here realizes that there is all sorts of things going on. With sidewalks and streets and sidewalks and streets. And it reminds me of traveling in many third world countries, but it's all for improvement. And then, of course, having voted for these bonds, I realize where the money comes from. So the idea is, I would like to, to be one of many voices on a committee that provides oversight for the use of our money, basically. Now, the background, why I'm into this at all now is for, my wife can't believe it, but we've been living here for thirty-eight years now. I came and started at the postgraduate school in nineteen eighty-seven and only retired in two thousand and thirteen. And for probably six of those, of the early years, I'd say between about nineteen ninety and nineteen ninety-five. I was president of the Old Town Neighborhood Association. And we achieved a lot. I say we, because the people who really did the work were mainly two older ladies who are now deceased. Mary Ann Finocchi and Colleen Sullivan, who were like terriers on top of the city. Sniffing out everything. And we achieved a huge amount. We got the American Legion under control. Used to be open twenty hours a day, serving underage kids, serving kids from DLI. And drunkenness and all that. And we've got that taken care of. We got sidewalks put in. We got storm drains put in. We, it was a joint effort by not just, you know, I happened to be the president. I was probably almost a figurehead with regard to those, those ladies. But since that time, I've, I was, been basically too busy with, things were going anyway, very well. And then I became chairman of my department and NPS and this and travel and all that. And so I basically had, you know, sort of dropped all that, all this type of local service. Probably between nineteen ninety-six and, and now. All right. So the ideas that I believe, you know, and the people working to improve their community and keep it safe and strong and all that kind of thing. And so this is a committee that I could, I don't know that I have great aspirations to do much more, but I could, you know, make some kind of a contribution. That's, that's, you know, in a nutshell, that's it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Question number two. Can you share one volunteer experience and how it affected you? And what did you learn from it? And how might that experience shape your approach if selected?
Oh, good. I guess I should have read these. Well, I'd have to put my glasses on. But by being president of the Old Town Neighborhood Association, you know, I followed Rick Hoyer. And with, when, when he was president, we were able to buy that piece of property. City, we got the city to develop an inert park there on, it would have been the continuation of Cedar between Roosevelt and Franklin. Rather than allowing someone to try to put up a house or two or three or four, four there. So I followed Rick and basically, you know, the idea of civic, you know, civic contribution and mobilizing people and having meetings and getting everyone's input and getting, you know, the, the money through that IP program. Getting the money to do all these things that, that are done with that type of money. So the, you know, I found it very rewarding. As I said before, I think it's, you know, a person should contribute what he or she can. And having retired, you know, I was chairman of a, a big department and I was director of the Center for Civil Relations. So, you know, I had to handle, you know, millions of dollars and personnel issues and all those things that you're aware of. Which is no great fun, working in the government and trying to do that type of thing. So I have, I have the energy and time to be able to make some kind of contribution now. Some kind.
All right, awesome. Next question. Have you ever attended any of the meetings for the board, commission or committee you're applying for?
No, but so I said, I, I see that Rick's on it or Hoyer's on it and, you know, I've worked with, well with him. But I can imagine anyone that's on that kind of a committee is someone that I could work with.
And then just a quick follow-up is, what aspects of the committee's work interest you most?
Yeah. Basically, the use of public money, you know, and how, how, how the contracts are let. I, when I retired, I became a contractor for a while, and now I've published a book and several articles on contracting out. And I have some sense of how contracting works or doesn't work. And the potential for graph corruption, kickbacks, all that nepotism, all that kind of stuff. And I must say that I was not a very successful contractor. I didn't win that many and, but I understand how the process works. And I've sat in on these seminars that they put on locally that are funded by defense acquisitions. So I, I have an idea of how contracting works or doesn't work.
Yeah. Awesome.
I don't come into this with an agenda thinking that there's crime, fraud, anything like that. I mean, it's not that, but I'm, I'm aware of how that kind of stuff works.
What I hear you saying is you have a skillset that brings that forward for you, so.
Yeah, yeah, I do. Yeah, I do. Dealing with oversight and intelligence and military things and all that, you know, you, you develop a certain sense of what's involved in this and how it works or doesn't work. And having dealt with these types of issues in new democracies, most, you know, much of it is just for the English to see. It doesn't, doesn't work. And, but in a case like this, I'm sure it works and I can contribute something to it. I don't have an agenda. That is, I don't, I'm, I'm not coming this sniffing that there's corruption or anything like that. I just, you know, but figure I can help, help, help it work.
So each board and commission has a regular meeting schedule and this oversight committee has, is scheduled as needed. So do you think you have, or does your schedule allow to commit to these meetings?
Yeah, there's, I'm retired and my wife has some, some issues. She, she can't travel. And if she can't travel, I, and I can't travel either. I have to be around. So yeah, I've, I have, the only commitment I have is go to the rec center twice a week and get some exercise. That's it. So yeah, I can pretty well figure out any.
Extra points.
Well, it's, it's great. Well, you know, and, you know, Old Town threw a bunch of money into that. And I remember at the time said, well, this is never going to catch on. Well, you know, I was there today. The place is packed. It's great. It's a great, it's a great service. Yeah. Yeah, I have, I have plenty of time. I have flexibility.
Okay. These boards and commissions often bring together residents with different viewpoints. Can you share how you're, you approach collaboration and respectful discussion when opinions differ?
So having been chairman for six years of the National Security Affairs Department and director.
And me knowing them too.
You ever deal with academics? So. And try to get in a government context?
Mic drop. That's a some.
Where, where you, you know, hey, that's the federal pay cap. No, we can't pay you, you know, more than a hundred and eighty, you know. So yeah. And Old Town as well, you know, I mean, I would fight with those ladies, Mary Ann Finocchi and Colleen all the time, but they were just, you know. So, you know.
Could, could, if I could ask a little bit of a follow-up to it. Could you describe kind of like what your experience is like in handling one of those moments with a faculty member or a neighborhood residence?
Yeah. I mean, basically, you never lose your cool. I mean, that, that's really what it amounts to. You don't take things personally. It's, it's an aside now, but my wife let me get our tenth Labrador, and he's, he's a problem. And I have, so I've been getting trained to be a trainer. And it's all about controlling your temper and not losing your cool, you know. So getting along with other people is to figure out how you could work with them. Now, you know, I have a relatively pleasant personality, so I don't, and I don't frown a whole bunch. And I make, you know, life is short. You don't want to go through it miserable.
Hundred percent.
I don't have any, I don't have problems. No. It was Old Town, you know, some of those meetings, people fighting. Okay.
You know it and you're signing yourself up for it. So that says something. Awesome.
Question here, and you've touched on this, if you would elaborate a little bit more. What unique perspective, skills, experiences do you think you would bring to this committee? And what do you hope to accomplish during the term if appointed?
Think, there's, I'm, I'm not coming into this thinking that there's any problem with the oversight committee. You know, that's, that, you know, that I haven't heard anything. I haven't had my ear to the ground. So it's not as though this is, you know, I'm going to go in on a white horse and save anything. It's rather, you know, to make a contribution. And, and what I, what I have is, you know, working with people and understanding how, how important oversight is. And just as long as those who are doing the work and doing the contracting realize that there is oversight. Then it minimizes the, the amount of problems, corruption, hanky panky, that kind of stuff that, that can take place. Again, I'm not coming into this thinking that there's a problem and I'm going to resolve the problem. It's rather just serving as, as a member of a committee that does this type of function.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for your time and your interest in serving the city of Monterey. We truly appreciate the effort you've made to be here and your willingness to contribute to our community. City staff will be following up with you after we complete all the interviews. Our plan is to announce the appointments and selections at the November eighteenth city council meeting. Thanks again.
Okay.
All the best.
Well, thanks, thanks very much for your time. No, I appreciate it. Now, I still can go on NPS, so I could take my dog there to run around.
There you go. There you go. Let out some of that emotion.
He works it out, then I.
Yeah, no, no, exactly. No, exactly. That's exactly it. Makes it easier for your wife.
Thomas, thank you very much. Nice to see you again.
Robert. Taylor. Can, I'm just going to take a quick rest. Please feel free to join us here. Excuse myself for one second.
Hi, Bob Ward.
Yeah, yeah, I got a little crib sheet here. It always helps.
Yeah, you guys are pretty strict here.
Yeah.
Now, I just moved here about, not quite six years ago. Germany previously, yeah. Forty-seven years with Army and DOD, traveling around the world, so. But I was stationed here. I went to DLI here in seventy-five and I was stationed here with, when Ford Ward was active. Just kind of turned that, that's, this is where I want to retire. Dream come true, yeah. I was six years in Germany. Yeah, but thirty, yeah, forty-seven. Good life. Army for twenty-six years, active duty, and then twenty-one years with the DIA and Department of the Army as a civilian.
What, what was your job when you were active?
Started infantry, did nine years in special forces and then the rest of the time in human intelligence.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Very cool.
That was great. That's great. Loved every minute of it.
I love it. Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
All right. So we have here Robert Ward. Good afternoon again, from Council District Three, applying to Measures PNS and then also NCIP.
Just let's limit it to NCIP. Obviously, I think it's a good way to get my feet wet if I'm in public service here. And listening to the previous interviewee, you know, he's probably, people like that are far more qualified than I. So I think NCIP is a good introductory way to serve the city.
That'll work. Thank you. So, thank you for being here today and for your interest in serving, uh, the community through one of our, uh, boards, commissions or committees. Uh, my name is Gino Garcia. I'm the vice mayor and here with Tyler Williamson, our mayor. And we truly appreciate the time and thought you've put into applying and also your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. And this is a public meeting and we'll be conducting brief interviews with each applicant. Each interview will last about fifteen minutes and we have six questions we'd like to ask to help us stay on schedule and make sure we cover everything. We'd appreciate it if you could keep your responses succinct and focused. And with that, I'll pass it to our mayor.
Awesome. All right. First question, how did you first hear about this volunteer opportunity? And why do you think you should be chosen to serve on this committee? And then just so you know that the questions are also there for you.
I've been cheating and reading them. Well, first heard about it. I didn't even know it existed. I knew there was a program. I didn't know it was an oversight committee. But, uh, on the news I saw, uh, something about, uh, the, the ten million dollar, you know, possible delta in the budget. And then Jean Rash sent out a nice newsletter to all her constituents that lays out a lot of the things that are going on. And it had a link to a video, uh, where they presented the baseball cards, as it were, on the different options for making up some of these. And she solicited, uh, input. Um, so I sent her very detailed emails, you know, on each one of the baseball cards and just my two cents worth on it. And, uh, we went back and forth on some things. And she said, you know, there's an opportunity like an NCIP you might be interested in volunteering for. I did a little research on it and, uh, said, yeah, that might be, might be a good fit. So that's why I applied.
I love it.
Pass it to Congressman Garcia.
Yes, thank you. Um, can you share one volunteer experience and how it affected you? What did you learn from it and how might that experience shape your approach of selected?
Well, the, uh, in my whole adult life has been of some kind of service to the, to the country and, uh, when we retired here about, not quite six years ago, I would look for volunteer opportunities. Uh, the one thing that we, my wife and I, uh, jumped on was Meals on Wheels. And, uh, so we've been doing that about four years. Um, we run two different routes. And it's just so heartwarming to see, uh, the impact that just delivering meals to people who have mobility issues and are, you know, either elderly or they're disabled and help them stay in their houses and, you know, help them make ends meet. You know, a lot of them are, you know, economically challenged. So it's, uh, it's really good. And my, my favorite route is the one, um, and the old Ford Ward because the Veterans Transition Center has, uh, housing that they put in. For originally it was just, uh, uh, family quarters and they built a whole new, um, condo there essentially for the homeless veterans and formerly incarcerated veterans. And, uh, so we just love meeting up with those guys and, uh, helping them and they, they're a great program. They get, they find these guys jobs. They find them counseling for if they have drug issues, uh, or alcohol issues. They help them, uh, get transportation. Um, it's just, it's amazing. So, yeah, I figured. We've always been interested in volunteering and that was a good start. And I, when I saw this opportunity, I said, I'd like to do what I can.
Awesome. All right. Question three, have you ever attended any of the meetings for the board, commission or committee you're applying for?
No.
Um, what aspects of the committee's work interest you most?
I looked at the, um, projects that were recommended and things that had been approved. And there's just a whole range of, uh, really good things. Like I said, we're Montereyans by choice, you know, we, you know, I was, I don't know if you hear when I was talking to Gino. I went to DLI here. I went to, uh, I served in some ID, decided we wanted to be in this area. But when we actually moved in, looking at all the, you know, the, the tight community, the small town feel that we have, all the, the, the festivals and everything that go on, and we just, you know, totally fell in love with it. And, um, so we just want to, I want to help out and, and all the projects that are listed there, even something kind of silly, you know, like squeegees for the, whatever. But, um, really improving the community and, uh, giving the, the, the residents input into, uh, um, things that need to be done. And usually a lot of towns don't, you don't hear, it's, it's, it's the board or somebody that decides what's to be done and without a lot of input from the residents. So, uh, I just thought that would be a good fit.
So each, uh, board or commission has a regular meeting schedule. Does, uh, your schedule allow you to commit to attending these meetings consistently? And, um, yeah, for both, uh, boards, commissions that you applied, um, well, we're sticking to NCIP. That's scheduled as needed, so.
They're mostly, I mean, our Meals on Wheels routes are always in the mornings. I don't, I assume you're not, the meetings aren't going to be like from eight to, to noon. If they're any time in the afternoons, uh, I'm totally retired and willing to help out absolutely.
They're usually in the evening.
Yeah, no problem.
Alrighty. These boards and commissions often bring together residents with different viewpoints. Can you share how your approach, you approach collaboration and respectful discussion when opinions differ?
I think the basic premise is if you show respect to others, then you'll, you'll generally get respect. I've lived all over the world, traveled all over Europe and Asia, um, South America, uh, parts of Africa. And, uh, being in human intelligence, you know, you're dealing with people from a wide variety of cultures and ethnicities and, uh, socioeconomic backgrounds. And, uh, you have to listen. You have to take, listen to them from their perspective. Somebody might get very strident about something, but there's a reason for that. And if you listen, if you don't, if you don't get defensive and you listen for why they really are emotional about something, then you should find some common ground.
So here's our, our last question. Uh, what unique perspective, skills or experiences do you think you would bring to this committee? And what would you hope to accomplish during your term if appointed?
I think just, um, hopefully basic modicum of common sense and a, uh, a, a range of, um, life experience that I think contributes. But for this particular committee, um, it's just, um, I think, listening to the, the recommendations that people have and, and, uh, trying to sort them out in terms of, uh, you know, priorities and making sure that, um, it's, uh, everybody's listened to. That's pretty much it.
All right. Well, thank you again for your time and your interest in serving the city of Monterey. We truly appreciate the effort you've made to be here and your willingness to contribute to our community. City staff will be following up with you after we complete all interviews. And our plan is to announce the appointments and selections at the, uh, November eighteenth city council meeting. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sir.
It's a pleasure. I think we have Taylor in the room. Hi, Taylor. Welcome. Thanks for being here today.
Nice to meet you. Hit the mic.
To me? You. Alrighty. Good morning and welcome. Thank you for being here today and your interest in serving the community through one of the city of Monterey's boards, commissions or committees. Uh, my name is Tyler Williamson. I'm the mayor. Um, I'm joined today by our vice mayor, Gino Garcia. We truly appreciate the time and thought you've put into applying and your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. This is a public meeting and we'll be conducting brief interviews with each applicant. Each interview will last about fifteen minutes and we have six questions we'd like to ask to help us stay on schedule and make sure we cover everything. We'd appreciate it if you keep your responses succinct and focused. With that, let's go ahead and get started.
First question, how did you hear first, uh, um, about this volunteer opportunity? And why do you think you should be chosen to serve on this committee?
Uh, I get emails from, I'm going to get her name wrong, but no, not her. Rash? Jane Rash? Jane. I get emails from her. About you? Oh, I get your emails and I read them. I get, I get those emails there. And, uh, and, uh, so in that email, it said that they were opportunities. And, um, the reason I think that I would be a good fit is I am an urban planner and I currently work in that field. It's something that interests me and I have a lot of passion about it. And so I think, I, I think I'd be a good fit.
All right. Next question, can you share one volunteer experience and how it affected you? What did you learn from it and how might that experience shape your approach of selected?
Uh, one volunteer thing I've done is, uh, I used to be the athletic director of Team RWB, the red, white and blue in Monterey. And, um, it's like veterans and you, you kind of, um, connect through social activities and exercise and stuff. And I think that one of the things that it, it really kind of did for me is you're used to being around your kind of core people that you're familiar with, you know, and your friends and family and whatever life kind of happened to you to, to get you with those people. But when you're in an organization that's wider, that has like anybody from the community coming in, you have to, you get exposed to people that maybe you wouldn't have been exposed to otherwise from different, you know, socio demographic, you know, sort of things. And it's, um, I think there's a richness in that, in, in getting to know people that are outside of your sphere. That, um, was the most beneficial for me personally, going to that organization.
And, uh, I'm going to mention also just for our viewers, uh, Taylor is from Council District Three, applying for Parks and Rec Commission, Planning Commission and NCIP. So the third question, have you, um, ever attended any of the, of the meetings for any of these boards, commissions? Okay. So what aspects of any of these committees, uh, work interest you the most? What?
Probably the Planning Commission interests me the most on a sort of a professional and academic level. I do, uh, right now I work for the University of South Florida in Florida, Romothee. And I do policy work and transportation in particular. And probably the, um, that, that side of things, the, the urban planning and transportation and housing and that kind of thing, that just interests me on a personal level. So that's probably one of, the one that interests me the most that way. And then the neighborhood one interests me more on a personal, this is where I live. If I could influence the way people make decisions about my neighborhood and the way funds are spent, um, that seems like a no brainer. And then Parks and Rec, I have a four-year-old and, um, we go, like, we live at parks, like every day almost. We're at some park somewhere in the county. So that one also seemed like if I had some say in, in influence and, and what is done with the parks in, in the county, that'd be awesome.
Okay. Each board commission has a regular, um, meeting schedule. Does your schedule allow you to commit to attending these meetings consistently? So for Parks and Rec, they meet the second Wednesday of each month at five thirty. Or the Planning Commission, they meet the second in this, oh, sorry, the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, um, at four and seven. And then there's just a little bit of a note with the Planning Commission one, which is they're, they're taking on the duties of the Architecture Review Committee. We're basically getting rid of that committee. So their work is going to, um, intensify and those meetings would likely run longer into the evening. Um, and then the NCIP, um, doesn't have like a really set schedule, but they usually meet in the evening time. So do those work for you generally speaking?
Yep.
Uh, these boards and commissions often bring together residents with, uh, different viewpoints. Can you share how you approach collaboration and respectful discussion, uh, when opinions differ?
I think that when, when you're talking about how to spend, you know, government money on our neighborhoods and you have all these different thoughts and opinions, when people get passionate about it, I think that's wonderful. And I think that I would see it as a positive if people have different opinions and different ideas of how things should be done. Whenever anybody's passionate about that, I, I would see it as a, a positive thing to, to kind of be thankful for. So I think I would, um, I would look at it like that. And then kind of like the, the previous guy says, as long as everybody's being very respectful, um, I would be okay with any kind of, of disagreement and discussion.
All right. And the last question is, uh, what unique perspective, skills or experiences do you think you would bring to this committee? What would you hope to accomplish during your term if appointed?
I think my specific skills is my background in urban planning, um, and specifically the policy work that I do right now in, in transportation. I think that it would, I would expand it to not just being about, because right now I'm very focused on transportation and specifically on the policy and planning and processes of transportation. I think that, um, my ability to do research and look deeper into, of things is, um, something that I can do very well. That maybe not everybody in the community has access to that type of skill. Um, and then I think the other side of it is that I am really interested in learning about it. And one of the reasons that I applied to be, to volunteer for this was because I wanted to know more about the way California does things and the way my neighborhoods do things and how my community works. And I thought, you know, what better way to learn and experience it than to become part of it? So.
Thank you very much for your time and your interest in serving the city of Monterey. We truly appreciate the effort you've made to be here and your willingness to contribute to our community. City staff will be following up with you after we complete the, uh, interviews. Our plan is to announce the point, the appointments and selections at the November eighteenth city council meeting. So thank you again. It's a pleasure to meet you.
Great to meet you too.
Fifteen minutes till the next interview. I know. So I don't know if you want to start earlier, take a little break or?
Yeah, I say keep powering through. If it works out, we might end up finishing early, which I think is probably. Which is, I think would be preferred over taking a break. Unless you, do you need a break?
No, I just talk back before getting worked on that computer.
Okay. Are you sure? If you need it, let me know because we can, we can definitely pause. Okay. Hi Kathy, how are you? Um, well, you don't have to move up here now, um, but whenever you get a chance, you can come up to this seat and we can get going. It's a good feeling. It's a better than the opposite is being behind. Are you Julia? Okay, okay. Thanks for being with us today. If, if Mr. Brassfield isn't here when we're done with Kathy, we could make you.
Sure.
I just tried to sleep you online, but. Okay Kathy, you can come on up.
Thanks for the assist there. Yes, good to see you too.
Vice Mayor, but I've attended some meetings and they're very good.
There it is. It's on the record.
It is on. I shouldn't have brought my cushion. It's okay.
Uh, I think, uh, the vice mayor will get us going again.
Sounds good. So, uh, good afternoon and welcome. Thank you, uh, for being here today and for your interest in serving, uh, community through the city of Monterey's, uh, boards, uh, commissions or committees. Uh, my name is Gino Garcia. I'm the vice mayor and I'm here with Tyler Williamson, our, our mayor. And we truly appreciate the time. And we truly appreciate the time and thought you've put into applying and your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. This is a public meeting and we'll be conducting brief interviews with each applicant. Each interview will last about fifteen minutes and we have six questions we'd like to ask, which you're reviewing there, posted in front of you. Great. And to help us, uh, stay on schedule and make sure we cover everything, we'd appreciate it if you could keep your, uh, responses succinct and focused. And just, um, to share here, Kathy is from, uh, council district one, applying for, uh, historic preservation and, uh, M C A C.
Beautiful. With that, I'll go ahead and start with our first question.
Okay.
How did you first hear about this volunteer opportunity? And why do you think you should be chosen to serve or continue serving on these committees?
Well, Mayor, um, I guess go back to twenty eighteen when Mayor Clyde, uh, spoke with me, he was trying to get me on some commission. My top two were historic preservation and the cultural, I'll just call it the cultural commission, if that's okay. And, um, uh, he couldn't, we didn't have an, there wasn't an opening. So then he asked me about my recreation background, just to get me on something so I could move overs. And I was a recreation leader in Sonoma County and Camp Kennedy, helping children with disabilities. But I said, that was a long time ago, you know, during college years. So, but luckily something happened and H P C opened up. And, um, I went through about four interviews, just to let you all know. And, uh, and it was with several from the city council usually, not, not just, uh, the mayor, I think with the mayor once. So, um, I, I've enjoyed historic preservation very much. You probably saw that I feel I've contributed to our decisions. My very favorite one was because I have to stop at the signal all the time on Del Monte and Figueroa. If you notice the sign that the Dust Bowl Brewing Company has there, they were going to put it on the building. We suggest they put it there. And I said, could you please put, since I was a history major, could you please put, it's located at the Monterey Railroad Depot, which is historic. And so every time I set the signal, I see that written there and makes me feel very good. So I, I don't, is that considered a volunteer opportunity? Experience, experience? No, but there were other things. Uh, I used to be a docent at Monterey Museum of Art. So when the executive director Corey was trying to get larger signage, which I haven't really seen yet, um, I was very much behind that and convinced the rest of the, of them that it is hard to see their signs on the front of the building. So that seemed logical, uh, over the elevator, I think it is. And, um, then next to Federico's, I'm sorry, I can't remember that adobe's name. I think it belongs to the Monterey, um, Savings and Loan. And the landscaping, especially a tree, had cracked the wall, the sidewalks, Federico's was upset. So, uh, I did take a horticulture class in college. I'm very much into gardening. So I was definitely behind that when the, um, arborist spoke that that's a tree that's like in Valboa Park in San Diego. It shouldn't be in Little Monterey with a historic adobe. So those are some of the things I guess I feel really, oh, right behind here, the Queen Anne, uh, the Williston's. That was one of my first meetings, actually, when we okayed, uh, they wanted to put a nice brick wall with the wrought iron, just to upgrade. And that went through too. So does that help a little bit? Okay.
Yeah, no, thank you. And, um, so, so I think you've, uh, addressed number two as well in your response. So thank you. But maybe, um, uh, to, to go a little bit deeper on this one. In those experiences that you shared, what, what did, um, how, how do you feel that those experiences shaped your approach or can shape your approach moving forward if selected?
And that's a very good question. I think because I do have, uh, two terms experience, I've learned a lot, I must, uh, admit. And, um, I have, I have a good knowledge of Monterey, the historic properties. And I'm also with Monterey History and Art. I docent at Casa Serrano regularly. I'm, I was just at the Stanton Museum last night. I know it quite well. So in this, in these two terms, I have gotten more familiar with our city and its beautiful historic buildings that obviously I feel we should protect and maintain. I think, yeah, I think it's just I've gotten more experience now than day one. And would like to continue because I, I do have more experience and, um, uh, history is very important to me. So.
Um, have you ever attended any of the meetings, uh, for the boards, commissions and committees you're applying for? I think it's safe to say that the answer is yes. So what stood out to you about their discussions or the way they operate?
Um, let's see, what has stood out? Well, I, I've been very pleased and I've been attending some city council meetings too, which I really had not done. And I think you'll remember Mayor, before you were Mayor, we had meetings about the rental situation in Monterey. I found those very interesting, although it's different from this, I realize. But, uh, I think when you attend more of these meetings that are more structured, uh, I, I think you really do learn a lot. In fact, it's helping me. I'm going to be president of Native Daughters next year. So I'm going to have to kind of follow all the, with the Roberts rules, kind of parliamentarian thing. So, um, I, 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 anything I've attended, I actually do feel they've been very well-run, discussions. I think you're great about having the city, the public, uh, contribute too. I, I do, I think it's wonderful. You allow people three minutes even to tell you the truth. So, um, yeah, I, I think, uh, I, anything I've been involved with, with the city of Monterey, I'm ten out of ten.
So a question about scheduling, uh, each border commission has a regular meeting schedule. Uh, as you know, um, does your schedule moving forward still allow you to commit to attending these meetings consistently? And we're talking about, um.
Right.
Both, both committees?
Yeah, uh, yes, Vice Mayor. Thursdays are good for me. I am involved in about six other organizations. I do a lot at San Carlos Cathedral too, the food pantry, loaves and fishes, et cetera. And, but that's different times. So Thursday is an open day for me. And, um, uh, I don't, I really don't have any problem with, uh, with that time or day. Um, and I live close, just up the hill. So, uh, that's convenient too. So no problem with the scheduling on either committee, commission.
Awesome. And then the next question is these boards and commissions often bring together residents with different viewpoints. Can you share how you approach collaboration and respectful discussion when opinions differ?
Oh, how I would approach the collaboration and da, 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 da. I've, I've seen some of you approach and, um, no, and I think you've handled it very well, especially with some of the phone and personal, um, presentations. Uh, yeah, because obviously there's going to be different viewpoints about anything in life. Well, I like starting with, with all due respect, uh, you know, uh, everyone's entitled to their opinion, uh, but sometimes you have to get people back on the subject. And maybe that would be tabled if they're off the subject. And, um, because, you know, timing's everything and you have a, an agenda you have to follow and have to move on. So I, I think it's with, um, respect and a little kindness, I think, just to keep things going.
All right, last question. What unique, uh, perspective, skills or experiences do you think you would bring to this committee or these committees? What, what would you hope to accomplish during your term if appointed?
Okay. I am re, oh, that was one thing I didn't say about the schedule too. I am retired now, the last couple of years. I have over forty years in the hospitality industry, running the visitor's center for the convention and visitors bureau was my last primary job. So obviously I was dealing with the public a lot. I've been a concierge in different hotels and again, dealing with the public. I have always, I am not a tech savvy person. Anyone who really knows me, you'll notice this was handwritten. I've noticed some of the resumes I've seen and comments, all beautifully typed. But, um, I am a people person and I do think even in this day and age, that's very important to have the personal touch. I have been recognized as number one employee by most of the hotels for whom I've worked. So I, I think, I, I mean, I'm very proud of my history background. When I lived in Danville twenty-six years ago, no history there to speak of. So moving here was, you know, just fantastic because there's so much history and I have been involved in Pacific Grove's history, Carmel's history, and obviously now Monterey's history, um, which is the best history. Where California became a state and we should have a visitor's center because just for that reason. So I think that's what I bring mostly is my contact with the general public for so many years. And, um, yeah, I, I, I think that's the number one, but I'm, I'm getting better with this tech stuff too. I'm, I'm a texter and as I say, most people know that about me too. So, uh, it works, it's fast.
I'm going to share with you a, a quick story when I was down instantly, when you were bringing in Danville, it made me think of this, um, down in San Luis Obispo and, uh, the mayor was giving me a tour of their city hall. And as you enter their city chambers, it says, you know, they're the, they were the, can't remember the exact number, like the seventeenth, uh, city.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, seventeen, that's, that's pretty good. And then somebody made this slide comment like, oh, well, it's hard to compete when you're the first, so.
Need we say more?
Need we say more?
I agree with you a hundred percent. Yeah, that is very, and so many, I must tell you just quickly, so many people coming to the visitor's center do not know California became a state here. So many. And I'm thinking, what happened in fourth grade? That's what, uh, uh, because I am, I am a former teacher too. But I taught slow learners and I think it did wear off on me. So, but that's age too, folks, that's age also. Oh, anyway.
Well, thank you very much for your time and your interest.
Quite welcome. Enjoy, and I always enjoy seeing you again.
We.
And oops, I keep wanting to take you.
You're good. We truly appreciate the, the effort you've made to be here and your willingness to contribute to our community. City staff will be following up with you after we complete all the interviews. Our plan is to announce the appointments and selections at the November eighteenth city council meeting. Thank you again.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate seeing you and good luck on this too.
Thank you.
All right.
Hello, sir. Come on in. It's a public meeting, you can join us anytime.
We may have a little gap in the afternoon. It looks like maybe, uh, Kimberly had signed on early. She had, looked like she had a two o'clock appointment. I'm not sure how they got double booked, but I'm trying to see if she can still make it.
Well, if we need to, we can throw rings for about a fifteen minutes ahead, so.
Not, not have responded yet, but maybe while you.
Yes, sir. Okay.
We're early.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Are you okay with that?
Hopefully I am.
Okay. Good to see you.
Hi, hi there. We're getting it, you have a fan. I beg your pardon?
You have a fan.
Hi guys. That's my one. Actually Jean just said many, so, um. Is it me? I think it, okay, I'll let you go.
All right.
You're better at starting than I am, so.
Am I?
Yeah. You're the closer?
Sure.
All right. So, uh, good afternoon and welcome, Mike. Uh, thank you for being here today and for your interest in serving the community through one of the city of Monterey's boards, commissions or committees. Uh, my name is Gino Garcia, I'm the vice mayor and I'm here with Mayor Tyler Williamson. And we truly appreciate the time and thought you've put into applying and your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. This is a public meeting and we'll be conducting brief interviews, uh, with each applicant. Each interview will last about fifteen minutes and we have six questions we'd like to ask and they're posted right in front of you as well for your reference. To help us stay on schedule and make, uh, sure we cover everything, we'd appreciate it if you could keep your responses succinct and focused. Um, and for the public here, uh, Mike Brassfield is from council district number four, applying for the, uh, Planning Commission. With that, I'll pass it to our mayor.
All righty. So for your first question, how did you first hear about this volunteer opportunity? And why do you think you should be chosen to continue serving on this committee?
I heard about this particular time, um, on, online. And with this, with the city notification of open board positions.
And then the second part is, um, and why do you think you should be chosen to ser, to continue serving on this committee?
My whole career has been serving the public. Lifetime career. Um, it has a deputy sheriff. I was originally selected to be part of disaster training. So for multiple years, I was sent down to California State Training Institute in San Luis Obispo and trained in how to deal with disasters and public issues. Besides my training as a peace officer. As I went up in ranks, I assumed more responsibilities than that. And that also included dealing with the planning department, county planning department. Any development that occurs in the county areas goes through the sheriff's office as well. And I participated in projects of development. Chiespa project in Casterville. I contributed some disaster planning as well as response issues. When we did the East Garrison project, I did, well, multiple, I can't even remember how many meetings. So we incorporated into the development of East Garrison, the mellow roots aspect of law. And that allowed me to put into the plan, we could get four new deputies when they develop in second stage of, at development. Um, and it went through the, the whole planning process that way. I dealt with planning issues for over twenty years. And dealt with the realities of bad planning, of high density issues. Too many areas dealing, trying to deal with community problems based on socioeconomic packing of, in, in certain neighborhoods. And when I retired, I took on two additional tasks. Hopefully to make use of my training in public safety issues. And that is I became a boy scout, a risk manager. And I joined the various committees in the city of Monterey. Trying to learn, I've lived in this city for fifty years, but trying to learn exactly how it worked. And as I said earlier, I've always tried to serve the public. I'm, right now I'm trying to pay back. It's taxpayers put a lot of money into training me. I'm trying to put that back into applying and my position in the planning commission.
Awesome. Thank you for it. Um, can you share one volunteer experience and how it affected you? What did you learn from it? And how might that experience shape your approach if selected?
One particular volunteer position in life? I've had so many very positive experiences of dealing with volunteer jobs, um, from the time I was a boy scout, the time I was a sea scout here in Monterey. Time I volunteered to join the Marine Corps. There's a lot of experiences that I have done. And like I said, point back to Boy Scouts as an adult. that I have done. And like I said, point back to Boy Scouts as an adult to pay back what I learned as a boy. And serving the city of Monterey. I love this city. I, I interview people on the street about their feelings of what we need, what they like, what they don't like. I'm trying to do that now with some people to learn. And oh, by the way, I am not running for office. I, I have turned down office offers because I do not want to be in office. I want to serve the people. That's why I do this, as a volunteer.
All right, I'll take the next question. Have you ever attended any of the meetings for the board, commission, or committee you are applying for? Assuming the answer is yes, um, that I know of, what stood out to you about their, uh, about the discussions or the way that, um, the operations are?
We're talking about the planning commission?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I love the, the diversity of the perspectives and views of the board. It offers so many aspects and actual views of an issue. It goes from the, we, Mike Dawson is an engineer. And then we have arch- had two architects and now we're down to one. And other, the other people that always have something to offer. I've come into some of these meetings with, after reading the materials, leaning in one direction and they swayed me with their discussion topics. So I really believe that that I've also served in NCIP and other committees. It is community views. It is community input. I love the fact that people come in and, or write in and express their opinions on things. So we can take that into our consideration. And I really feel that the mix right now on the planning commission is great.
Thank you.
So in terms of scheduling, does your schedule allow you to commit to attending to these meetings consistently? And specifically regarding the, the planning commission, they meet every second and fourth Tuesday, as you're aware. But with that added note that when, um, planning commission takes on ARC duties, uh, the meetings might run a little bit longer into the evening.
We've already discussed that, uh, with, with various people and I anticipated that. When you assume, and by the way, I don't find anything wrong with the decision of council to do it. Even found online where some other cities are now looking at that, doing the same thing. So I don't, and I don't have any problem with scheduling, uh, typically. I've been sure I've missed four, five meetings or meetings in eight years, so.
Okay. Um, next question, these boards and commissions often bring together residents with different viewpoints. Can you share how you approach collaboration and respectful discussion when opinions differ?
I think I just touched on that, but I'll elaborate. When people come in and, and they have a differing opinion on a topic that I do, I listen to them. And Mr. May, I, I don't like time limits on discussion from the public personally. So I like to hear what they have to say. And like I said, I have changed my position on what I thought was a tentative position to different out, aspects and/or conclusions on the outcome. And I, I really do, I really listen. I was trained to be an interviewer. I know how to listen. And I really believe that in our form of government, it is important for us to listen and take in that input from the public.
Thank you for it.
You've touched on these a little bit, but if you could elaborate, what unique perspective, skills, or experiences do you think you would bring to this committee? And what would you hope to accomplish during your term if appointed?
One of the things we haven't touched on really is that and part of my education, I attended the FBI National Police Academy. And one of the things there we talked about was the problems associated with previous experiments the United States has conducted on cities. And I will specifically say what people term as projects, particularly during the, the late seventies and eighties or in early nineties. And the problems that arose from those projects were that it's no longer done. They don't try to pack. And that's one of the problems I'm having with the state trying to go ten stories high. Putting that many people in close proximity creates friction. And then you add to it socioeconomic issues. It creates more friction that causes problems in your cities. I studied that. And one of the things, and this is, it's getting kind of dated now, but the suggestion was that when you tried to increase your density, it, it's first of all, it's mixed throughout the whole city. And it'd be no more than a fourplex, but put fourplexes all through the city, not in one area. And in the previous experience of Monterey, the further you get from the flagpole downtown, the density increases, particularly in my neighborhood in fourth, in fourth district. And it's something that I don't think is touched on enough in overall planning. And I, I will say this, as far as, as, as experience and information, our planning department is A number one. They really have, I think, a handle on it. And a lot of things are unsaid when they bring it to us because they're not trying to influence us. They're trying to give us information and that information flow, I think, is well done. But there, I was trained in dealing with those issues. And I don't think we ever really discuss them. I love sometimes the joint meetings where we do discuss planning issues. And you guys make the policy. We try to carry out and practice that and sort through some of those things for you. And I think it, our planning department keeps us on track.
All right, thank you. Any additional questions? So thank you very much for your time and your interest in serving the city of Monterey. We truly appreciate the effort you've made to be here and your willingness to contribute to our community. Uh, city staff will be following up with you after we complete all the interviews. And our plan is to announce the appointments and selections at the November eighteenth city council meeting. So thank you again and wish you all the best.
Have a good day. All right. And I think we have Julietta next.
Wow. I'm impressed. Okay.
It's a pleasure to meet you.
By the way, I'm, I'm, I don't, I don't know if it's, it's biased to say it, but I'm Fernanda's mom.
Oh, we've met before.
Right.
Yes, I remember. Okay, yes. Oh.
Please, just, just, uh, don't, don't be special with me. It's just that I, um, it's, it's.
Well, we love Fernanda, so I'm just gonna put that out there.
I know.
Wonderful.
I'm going to be with my kid planting some trees. You offered a couple of treats also.
Yes, yeah. Okay, I'm, I'm very passionate about plants and, and all the surroundings and everything, so.
I love it. I love it. Well, good afternoon and welcome. Thank you for being here today and for your interest in serving the community through one of, uh, the city's boards, commissions, or committees. I'm Tyler Williamson, the mayor, and am joined by our vice mayor, Gino Garcia. We truly appreciate the time and thought you've put into applying and your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. This is a public meeting and we'll be conducting brief interviews with each applicant. Each interview will last about fifteen minutes and we have six questions we'd like to ask to help us stay on schedule and make sure we cover everything. We appreciate if you could keep your responses succinct and focused. With that, let's go ahead and get started.
All right. Good afternoon and thank you again for being here. Uh, do you prefer Julietta, Julieta?
Whatever.
Okay.
It's really hard for people to actually spell my name because it's, it's with a strong J, Julieta.
Julieta?
And whatever.
I like the strong J. I'm gonna go with the strong J.
I'm okay for the strong J.
Julieta here is, uh, uh, from council district three and applying for Parks and Rec. So, uh, we'll go to the first question. How did you first hear about this volunteer opportunity? And why do you think you should be chosen to serve on this committee?
Very succinct, like you said. Um, I am retiring at the end of the year.
Congrats.
And I've been, thank you. And I've been asking my daughter if she knows about any volunteer positions that open here in the city of Monterey. And she told me about this one and I apply immediately. That's how.
And the second part to that question is why do you think you should be chosen to serve on this committee?
There's many things that I can say in regards to that, the position, but I think that mainly what everybody is struggling now with the government that we have, not to say anything about government, whatever politics is, but, um, reducing cost. Somehow we have to keep the city of Monterey with their, its enchantment of parks and areas that are, um, good for our entertaining and good for, uh, us to go out and play with kids and be with family. But there's a cost to that. And, uh, um, I know that the city, I've read that the city is really, really struggling for next year's budget to fill that budget. We are short money and I don't want to say how much, but we're very short. And, uh, I would like to be the one to come up with a different plan that, than anyone has here and tackle those issues that we have. And come up with a plan to, uh, keep on building these beautiful outdoor areas, but with, of course, less cost.
Give me one second. Okay, um, second question. Can you share one volunteer experience and how it affected you? What did you learn from it and how might that experience shape your approach if selected?
This is gonna be a very short one. I have never volunteered before.
Love that. If you were to volunteer, maybe just to, um, get a sense, what would you see yourself doing?
Let me tell you first why, and very short. Um, I am a single mother. I've always, I mean, most of my life I've been a single mother. And raising two good kids and putting them through college and then through master's degrees took me a lot of my time. That's why I didn't volunteer. But if I were to volunteer or if I had volunteered, I've put my best foot forward on anything. I mean, I, I, I am very passionate on whatever I do. And I'm very passionate of the results that I, um, looking forward to. So I would be an excellent volunteer per- person.
Thank you for that.
Have you, uh, attended any of the, um, PRC meetings?
No.
Okay. So, um, knowing what you know of the, uh, commission, what, what aspects of the committee's work interested you the most?
Well, to share my knowledge in these meetings, uh, I don't, I've never attended, like you said, a meeting, but I have a lot of background and knowledge in parks in, I actually, um, studied agriculture. I have a degree in agricultural engineering. And I know what happens to trees. I know what, what, how to make them grow better. I know, um, uh, the, the, the insects that, um, affect them. I know, um, IPM, I don't know if you're familiar with that. Integrated Pest Management. It's, um, how to, how to bring out their, their fullest potential so they can grow and, uh, give us the shade that we want and the oxygen that we breathe. That's, that's, uh, basically what I bring, knowledge. And I've been operations manager, supply chain manager, and, um, uh, packing manager. And it's always been about cutting costs, cutting costs, cutting costs. So that's what I will bring too.
Awesome. Um, next question is each board or commission has a regular meeting schedule. Does your schedule allow you to commit to attending these meetings consistently? And for Parks and Rec, it's the second Wednesday of each month at five thirty.
Yes, no problem. Uh, like I said, I'm retiring, so.
These boards and commissions often bring together residents with different, uh, viewpoints. So can you share how you approach collaboration and respectful discussion when opinions differ?
I think that everyone has something good to say and valuable to say. It's, it's just, uh, to listen and, um, implement all ideas together in one. And you might come up with something even better than what you were thinking of at the beginning. So, like I said, everyone's opinion is valid and valuable. So I would be, um, very respectful with everyone and try to figure out what's the best outcome of all the, viewpoints that I would have at that time.
Okay. And then the last question is what unique perspective, skills, or experience do you think you would bring to this committee? What would you hope to accomplish during your term if appointed?
Like I said, I would like to continue. Uh, by the way, this is Monterey and, um, all the surrounding cities are tree cities. I don't know if you've noticed that everywhere you go, there's a tree city. That's what I want to accomplish, that trees that give us so much, that give us so much oxygen, so much shade, so much, so many places to gather around, be the, the monument and the landmark of our city. That's what I want.
Thank you for that.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time and your interest in serving the city of Monterey. Uh, we truly appreciate the effort you've made to be here and your willingness to contribute to our community. Uh, city staff will be following up with you after we complete all interviews. And our plan is to announce the appointments and selections at the November eighteen city council meeting. So thank you again.
For giving the opportunity.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
And there's nobody waiting in the queue here either, so we will just hold tight.
And there's nobody waiting in the queue here either, so we will just hold tight.
I got it on early. Uh, mine was at 3:15, so I don't know if you want to take me now or I can.
Yeah, we're ready. We have a gap in time. So if you're ready, we're ready.
Yeah, let's do it.
Hey.
Hey.
Awesome. Good afternoon. Thanks for joining us. Um, and thank you for being here today and for your interest in serving the community through one of the city of Monterey's boards, commissions, uh, or committees. Uh, for the, the public, we have Juan Rodriguez. And let me find you here on uh my spreadsheet. Uh, Juan Rodriguez is from council district one and applying for uh HPC. So my name is Gino Garcia. I'm vice mayor. I'm here with our mayor Tyler Williamson. And we truly appreciate the time and thought you've put into applying and, and your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. This is a public meeting and we'll be conducting brief interviews with each applicant. Each interview will last about 15 minutes and we have six questions we'd like to ask to help us stay on schedule and make sure we cover everything. We'd appreciate it if you could keep your responses succinct and focused. And with that, I'll pass it over to our mayor. All right. All right. And so your first question is, how do you, how did you first hear about this volunteer opportunity? And why do you think you should be chosen to serve on, on this committee?
So, so I think the timing, when I first heard of uh this opportunity, was kind of weird because it was during the pandemic. And uh, you know, I had a little bit more time, uh, like most of us. Uh, well, I shouldn't say most of us, but I had a little bit more time and I was thinking, you know, I was looking at everybody uh doing their part for their, for their community. I'm not a doctor. I'm not a nurse. I'm not an EMT, uh, but I was interested in doing something for our community. We've lived here for about uh six years, lived in uh, no, wait, wait, nine years, nine years in Monterey. 2012 is when we moved into the area and we just love uh this community um and just wanted to be part of it. Uh, for the last, uh, I don't remember, maybe four or five years, I've been serving on the Historic Preservation Commission. And this last year has been as the chairperson. Um, I think they took pity on me last year. I think it was my turn last year, but uh they gave me a, another chance to, to take a low B vice chair uh for a year. And now is, it has been my turn since July.
Thank you. Uh, can you share one volunteer experience and how it affected you? What did you learn from it? And how might that experience uh shape your approach if selected?
All right. Well, I can, I've done some volunteering in my life, but uh keeping it to the historical part. Um, I'll just mention, um, I used to volunteer as a docent at the museum over at the army base. And uh, you know, it was, it was, um, it was interesting, you know, I, I, not being from the area, it was interesting to learn uh that we have a lot of history here. And, you know, just walking around in my community, it always amazes me how, you know, this was the capital of Alta California at some point. And you don't know, you know, you might be walking by a nondescript building and it has some historical value. There, somebody that contributed to our community lived there, uh, an important government building. Um, or, or, you know, just, just basically something interesting happened there. I see the value in preserving our history. This country is very, very young, uh, you know, compared to other countries, Europe, Latin America. But it's, you know, we still have to preserve our history. We're living it, right? So we, we have that, that responsibility as current residents to stew, to be good stewards of our historic resources for us, our children, our children's children, and any other resident that comes after us to, to preserve it.
Okay. And then have you ever attended any of the meetings for the board commissioner committee, which you have, given that you're the chair? Um, so that being said, what stood out, what stands out to you um about the discussions or the way that the board operates?
Well, you have very, very, very dedicated city staff uh supporting the commission and uh that also believe in the mission. It's been great working with my fellow commissioners. Uh, all, all these people have just such love and respect for our community and the interest of uh preserving, you know, our historical resources for, you know, our enjoyment and, you know, future people's enjoyment, our tourists uh too. So I think, uh, I mean, I, you know, first year was a little shocking. I don't know what, what was happening. I almost cursed uh in a nice way. I remember it's a recorded meeting. Um, I don't know what the heck uh was happening uh the first meeting, although, you know, at my uh job, I do staff a couple of commissions and a committee. So I had some knowledge of the Brown Act and the rules regarding the Brown Act. But it was mostly, you know, just getting to know uh my colleagues uh on the commission and how, how much they care and the wealth of experience they bring to the table. And it was also pretty cool to see that, you know, everybody comes from a different background. Uh, I don't know if that was just the, the pool of volunteers that wanted to get on that commission. Or I'm gonna think it was planned by our for, former mayor, the, the composition. And, and I know uh you all have also appointed a couple of new members. But it's just kind of cool to see um the, the difference and the, the wealth of experience of different people bring to the commission and how that makes really a difference and how we approach as a commission, the problem from different uh viewpoints. Dare I say it nowadays, it might be a bad word, but the diversity of viewpoints make us uh, you know, a lot, a lot stronger, I think.
Awesome. Thank you for it. So if uh reappointed, um, the, would your schedule still allow you to commit to attending these meetings consistently?
Uh, absolutely. I, I have, as the staff will tell you, maybe uh a couple of uh times where I do leave the country with my family to, to, to visit family. It's usually in the summer, in July or August. But other than that, yes, I have it um now formally in all my calendars. So I, I don't know if you heard when the meeting started, like three different machines beeped. Uh, just to uh, to remind me. So yes, I can, I can attend consistently. And, and, and to be honest, too, now I feel even a bigger responsibility since I'm the chairperson. I don't want to leave the staff um or my uh fellow commissioners hanging.
Alrighty. And then these boards and commissions often bring together residents with different viewpoints. Can you share how you approach collaboration and respectful discussion when opinions differ?
Um, I think it's part of uh, uh, life, right, to be quote unquote exposed to different ideas and viewpoints. Uh, the idea is that we're respectful, uh, that we listen to each other. At the end of the day, I think we share the same values. And if we're um, you know, operate from those values, we, we can disagree on, for example, whether trickle down economics works or doesn't work. But as Americans, you know, we also, we all want to be the prosperity of the country, whatever shape it, it, it takes. Similarly to the commission, you know, whatever different viewpoints. And it's interesting because there are different, different viewpoints. And now knowing my colleagues, I kind of know how they're gonna fall now. But I think just the diversity of viewpoints make, make us a lot stronger. It, it helped us make a better recommendation uh to the council.
So thank you. What unique uh perspective, skills, or experiences do you think you would bring to this committee? And what would you hope to accomplish during the term if appointed?
Uh, well, educational, educationally wise, I, I have a, I made up a word, but my background, education background, uh, I have two law degrees. I have a law degree from um, from Mexico and I have a law degree from here. I'm, I'm, I'm a member of the bar, although I'm not, in California, although I'm not uh practicing um law, I'm still active, but I'm not representing anybody. Um, I think that helps me. And I work for the county of Monterey staffing commissions. So I think I have a, a, a good knowledge or good handle of the Brown Act, how organizations work, how commissions work, how commissioners work, how the pain that we inflict sometimes on the staff uh as commissioners too. And then uh in 2016, I also obtained a master's in history uh from San Jose State in a special specialization of modern European history. So I think uh all that, and plus, I mean, I, just to give you an idea how much I like history, I did that for fun. Um, wasn't very fun for my wife at the time, unfortunately, because we had little kids and I had to drive to San Jose. But now looking back, I'm so grateful that, that uh she supported me in that opportunity. So when I saw the, I think I got the email, like I mentioned, during the pandemic, and I saw that there was this opportunity for the historic preservation. And then knowing some of your museum staff, having been a docent before, I just thought, man, I mean, the, it just meshes, right, the experience and, and my interests above all. And then, you know, like I, like I uh, like I mentioned, I mean, we're so lucky to live here. We leave, I sometimes, I'm not a morning person, leave early in the morning. And then as soon as I turn left and see the bay, I get a little bit of perspective and, and say, what do you have to be angry about? And, and that's, I think, something that I would like to share with my fellow residents by helping the city preserve these historical buildings.
Awesome. Well, is it me or you?
Oh, I can do it. All right. I forget. Um, well, thank you very much for your time and your interest in serving the city of Monterey. Uh, we truly appreciate the effort you've made to be here and your willingness to contribute to our community. Uh, city staff will be following up with you after we complete all interviews. And our plan is to announce the appointments and decisions at the November 18 city council meeting. So thank you again, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the availability of the Zoom options. Thank you very much for that. So you said November 18th?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. Yes. All right. Well, thank you very much. Nice seeing you both.
Have a good one.
You too. Bye.
That's called passion, I think. So next we have Mr. Overton. Are you, you're Joseph?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Yes, we've met before.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Do you, would you like to go now?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, the next person isn't here yet, and we might as well just kind of squeeze you in here if that works for you.
Me.
Awesome. You can come on over to this seat here.
What I'm getting myself into.
It's good to see you.
Good to see you, Al. Good to see you again. Yeah, yeah.
Good to see you again.
Yeah, thank you.
Perfect time.
Yeah, what a perfect timing.
I wandered the halls aimlessly for a minute there. I was like, okay, I'm here.
Just why you show up early.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, all right.
Okay, all right. So we have um Mr. Joseph Hill here, who's in district four and is, put his name in the hat for NCIP, um, see, the alternate C for NCIP for Del Monte Grove Laguna Grande. Um, and so with that, good morning, sir, and welcome. Thank you for being here today and for your interest in serving the community through one of the city of Monterey's boards, commissions, or committees. I'm Tyler Williamson, the mayor, and I'm joined by our vice mayor, Gino Garcia. We truly appreciate the time and thought you've put into applying and your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. This is a public meeting and we'll be conducting brief interviews with each applicant. Each interview will last about 15 minutes and we have six questions we'd like to ask to help stay on schedule. We make, and make sure we cover everything. We'd appreciate it if you could keep your responses succinct and focused. And with that, we'll go ahead and get started.
All right. Uh, thank you again for being here, Joseph. Uh, good to see you. So how did you hear um first about this volunteer opportunity? And why do you think you should be uh chosen to serve on this committee?
I heard about the opportunity through the Del Monte uh Laguna Grande homeowners association. Uh, probably got that in there mixed up, but uh heard about through the association, uh, having been a member of that neighborhood for uh probably over 20 years. Um, and the desire to help keep and improve the neighborhood and everything that we have to offer there, to help grow it, to help uh deal with all the changes that are gonna come about. So. And also seeking hopefully possible uh second term as an alternate with the boards and commissions. So.
Awesome. And the next question, can you share one volunteer experience and how it affected you? What did you learn from it? And how might that experience shape your approach if selected? And I just forgot to mention that the questions are here in front of you too.
Oh, okay.
Easier to track that way as well.
Okay. Um, so one of the volunteer experiences that I had, uh, I will say, probably prior to moving, returning home, this Monterey's always been my home, uh, prior to returning home, being a part of a, a commission in the Sacramento area there, would live there for a few years. And I think seeing the neighborhood change and at points, you could see some of the resistance to change. It was in a very rural area that uh was starting to deal with development. And so you had a lot of individuals that didn't want to see the development, but also knew that the development is needed to help grow the community, help, you know, keep things the way um they had been established. Um, and to help improve and bring about and that change, all change is not bad. Uh, that there is change that can help benefit and things such as we were able to put in parks and we were able to put in uh activities for both senior as well as for uh families. Is, and that was very helpful and keep and maintain, if you will, the quorum of the neighborhood at the same time. So those things kind of got me, pulled me in. I started off as just a volunteer. got me, pulled me in. I started off as just a volunteer and then got pulled in and actually decided to uh, actually run for a position on there. So.
Yep. Thank you for it.
Can you please share with us what, uh, what has stood out to you about the discussions at NCIP meetings or the way that they operate?
I think the thing that stands out to me most is the level of involvement from all of the different committee members. Um, there's a willingness and a desire to improve, you know, all that is Monterey. Um, and it, I think the thing that stands out to me is there also has to be a balance of, of what can be done. Um, and in this case, you know, there's limited funding and the funding environment changes from year to year. Uh, I believe that the conversations that are uh, discussed and topics that are raised regarding funding to improve the community, there's, there's a, a desire to continually improve. But every year we can't do all the things that we, uh, want to do. You know, we have to, um, you know, deal with the fact of the reality that you're going to have years, you know, funding. So I think the conversations that stem around, you know, improving, trying to, you know, what can we do with a specific amount of funding in specific areas and try not to have any one particular area. Um, you know, you know, if you will, manipulate or take a majority of the funding and that, you know, it's, it's best to try and improve all areas as, that you can and even kill as best as you can.
Awesome. Um, next question, each board or commission has regular meeting schedule. Does your schedule allow you to commit to attending these meetings consistently? They're not really, there's not really a schedule to it, but they're usually in the evenings.
Yes. Uh, for the most part, I would say about 90% of the meetings I can usually attend. There is because of what I do, I do have to travel from time to time out of the area. So there are times where there's a conflict in those meetings.
Thank you for it.
These boards and commissions often bring together residents with different viewpoints. Can you share how you approach collaboration and respectful discussion when opinions differ?
I think anytime you're gonna, you have a, a group of individuals that are passionate about, uh, a particular topic and they say, let's say it's the city of Monterey. You're going to have a lot of differing opinions. Areas that impact, you know, people that live in, in New Monterey or maybe different from the people that live near the beach. And maybe different from the people that live downtown, maybe different from the people that live over, uh, near Laguna Grande. I think what you have to do is be respectful, uh, and professional in the sense of being able to hear their opinion, uh, understand what their point is, hopefully be able to provide a convincing and compelling argument there. Uh, but I think the, the wrong thing to do is basically is to, uh, shut them out or to, you know, sequester them, if you will, regarding their opinions. I think you're going to have to learn to, everybody's going to have to work together and keep the same focus, the same subject in mind, and that is the betterment for the city of Monterey. And, you know, sometimes some points will be stronger than others. Uh, that doesn't mean that the, the weaker point, if you will, um, is less than. It's just perhaps maybe that argument wasn't as strong as someone that made uh, for a particular different issue. So it's learning to, you have to learn to work, you know, together. It, it's not going to get anywhere. Um, if there's constant fight and struggle just to be able to work together and collaborate. So.
And then last question, what unique perspective, skills or experience do you think you would bring to this committee? What would you hope to accomplish during your term if appointed?
Uh, unique skills and ability, I think it's, uh, ability to be able to, to organize, be able to look at things. With a relatively level head, be able to understand, uh, the points of view of someone that perhaps is different from yours. And then taking a look at and being able to, to what's in the best interest at the end of the day, what's in the best interest for the city of Monterey? Um, you know, I may have a, a really passionate point about something that's occurring in our end and, and someone else may have in a different area. You know, at the end of the day, what's the best interest? Where are we going to get the best, you know, bang for the buck for our dollars that are going to be spread or for whatever the issue is. So I think I'll be able to have that. Um, I'm very concerned with, um, you know, how Monterey improves. Uh, I literally grew up here. Uh, went to high school, attended elementary school here. Um, and so it's been interesting to me after having been gone for a while, I haven't been back now for a period of time to actually see the growth and the development. So. And see some things change and some things that, you know, kind of continue on. In a standard. So I think that my ability there, um, and, and just passion for it will be, would be helpful. So.
Alright, well, thank you very much for your timing or interest in serving the city. Uh, we truly appreciate the effort you've made to be here and your willingness to contribute to our community. Uh, city staff will be following up with you after we complete all the interviews. And our plan is to, um, announce the appointments and selections at the November 18 city council meeting. So thank you so much again for being here.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time. Appreciate it. Thank you. I'll see you again. Yes, yes. Thank you. See you again. Alright, thank you.
Uh, there, I will confirm that, um, Ms. Turgen will not be able to make the fore clock today. So I'm going to run over and see if Mr. Elizabeth can come up earlier.
Yeah. Yeah, if he can come now, um.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know why my head, I'm thinking something different than where we're at. It feels like it's not as long as it has been, but anyways, that's just me.
So David Clear.
Yeah. I promise my hands are clean. With soap and water. Um, cool. You want to kick us off?
Sure.
Awesome.
Alright, so, uh, good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for being here today and for your interest in serving the community through one of the, uh, city of Monterey's boards, commissions and committees. Uh, Mr. David Overton is from council district number two, applying for NCIP and Deer Flats, uh, representative. So, um, my name is Gino Garcia. I'm the vice mayor. I'm here with our mayor Tyler Williamson. And we truly appreciate the time and thought you've put into applying and your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. And, uh, this is a public meeting and we'll be conducting brief interviews with each applicant. Each interview will last about 15 minutes and we have six questions we'd like to ask that are also posted right in front of you for your reference there. Um, to help us keep, um, or to help us stay on schedule and make sure we cover everything. We'd appreciate it if you could keep your responses succinct and focused. And with that, I'll pass it to our mayor.
So. So first question for you here, how did you first hear about this volunteer opportunity? And why do you think you should be chosen to serve?
So as you know, I've been on the NCIP committee for several years now. So, uh, served as the primary and only for let's see, like eight to 10 years. Uh, finally recruited a primary in Scott, uh, who just retired from the Navy. Uh, has served and I, I moved into the alternate position this last year. But Scott's moving, so he can't fill his term. So. Uh, I guess it's a question I have right now, um, because I did apply to be now the new alternate. I would normally just
Continue on.
By practice, uh, fill as the primary with Scott's, uh, term or resignation. Uh, but I know that Monique Caldi has now applied, uh, to be the primary. So this question I have, I did apply and then found out about Monique's, uh, application. So I'm okay with continuing to serve as a Deer Flats alternate and allow her to be put. I, I guess the question was, would that start next term? Uh, or I don't know sure where we stand with.
So as soon as the appointments are made, as soon as the council makes the appointments, it's effective.
Okay.
Hmm.
Okay. So, uh, yeah, that's what, um, I, my discussions with both Scott and Monique and I have, uh, talked about her application as well. So, um, you know, after doing it for many years as the primary, I'm, I'm fine with remaining in the alternate, uh, position. So I'm not sure if we, uh, would, I, I, my term, I think is still going to last for several years, right?
Yeah, if you aren't selected, well. Actually.
It's, oh. Here, here the, I, well, in, in the systems, what you're, um, alternate position.
Yeah, you'll have, there'll be a, whenever that's up, you'll be notified by staff and then there'll be an opportunity to reapply.
Cause I think what happened was I applied and the clerk wrote me back and said, we do have a primary. I didn't know at the time who it was, but I have since, uh,
Figured that out.
It's Monique. Yeah. Um, and, um, I, the clerk wrote Clementine? Wrote back and said, well, we'll pull then your application. So I'm not sure if I'm here because of that application going in to trigger the meeting or where we're at right now. Um. Okay.
When the representative position taken, you automatically came over them.
Right.
So we were trying to explain to you that you didn't have to apply to fill those duties. You automatically did so. So your application was for the vacancy of the rep, which will go through the, the rest of the term of the rep, which I would have to look that up. Your, your appointment as an alternate runs through June of 2020.
Good.
So if you were selected as a representative, then the alternate will be taken to their, their, I'm not sure if they could choose, um, the other person as the alternate at that time or what, but that your position is the alternate through June of 2020.
Yeah. So I'm fine with just remaining, assuming that Monique gets appointed.
Hmm. I, I would just ask the follow-up question. Would you be willing to serve if she's not appointed? Okay.
Yes.
Alright. Did you ask that question? So it's my turn? No, I asked that question. Yeah. So it's you.
Can you share, uh, uh, one volunteer experience and how it affected you? Um, what did you learn from it? And how might that experience shape your approach if selected?
Do you not want me to use my previous NCIP experience or should I use?
Whatever you.
Okay. So I also served with the Navy League. Uh, it's a civilian organization supporting the maritime services, Navy, Marine Corps, Coast Guard. Uh, that's very fulfilling. Um. You know, the way, the way we advertise the program to the community is sort of that Navy commercial. You know, I forget the actual percentage, but you know, a large percentage of the earth's surface is covered by water. And how we interconnect, you know, as nations through our maritime, uh, and to think of just what we do in terms of trade, you know, the bulk of that goes over the sea. So important to have a strong, you know, if you're going to be a global player of a strong Navy presence to protect the maritime commons, uh, and to support our naval services. So I'm former marine myself. So I can have an intimate, you know, uh, awareness of the importance of that. So it's been useful just to have, have support for shipbuilding and, uh, you know, support things like going on right now with the shutdown, just supporting our, uh, active duty services. So, uh, yeah, it's just, uh, being able to advocate and represent and, uh, it feels noble service. Same thing with NCIP. Uh, I just see the value of representing our community, you know, to the, uh, the interests of the public at large for projects and things like that. And I, I think it's been really good, um, the interaction between the representatives and council, uh, and mayor as well, uh, on issues that, um, you know, where there's priorities or not just little neighborhood things, but, uh, things were needed, uh, the athletic center, you know, improvements of the library or just other infrastructure needs. I know one of the big ones now is undergrounding. We talked about that a little bit, but I, I just see there's value in that that interaction between what's the NCIP can do for the neighborhoods in the community, uh, and then just support, you know, city needs as well. So that's been rewarding too. I mean, I look around and see things that are labeled. You know, this is an NCIP project. I just drove by the, the bus to see that Portland Lou. Uh, you know, and that's a big thing we worked on for many years was debating what we're going to do for more additional public restrooms. So that's, that's the reward.
The next question is related to, um, attendance of the meetings. Um, given that you've attended many of these meetings, um, what stands out to you about those discussions and the way that it operates?
Consensus building. Uh, it was really interesting when I first came on, the way we did voting and the way it's, you know, exists now, but, um, you can see where it really does, you know, the way that representatives represent and talk to their constituents, if you will, the neighborhood uh, folks and what, what their desires are and what they don't want, uh, to see how you know, democracy in action, to see that, um, I, I think it's just value in building, you know, consensus for, hey, the community feels this is important. You know, and when you have a line of people waiting to talk, you know, on an issue like paddleball, uh, or no pickleball, that was a big one last year.
Yeah.
Uh, but in previous years, you know, more basketball courts and you see the advocacy come up and uh, it, it just helps sway, you know, the direction we go as an ACIP. So the value in that was, uh, having a structure, you know, and, uh, limits, you know, talk, talk limits and things like that. But, um, I, I think the value of that was building, you know, that consensus for what's best for the community.
Thank you for it.
So NCIP has scheduled meetings, uh, as needed, um, in the evenings. Um, so does that schedule still allow you to commit to attending these meetings consistently? Okay.
Some went very long. Midnight, right? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's like.
Um, next question, these boards and commissions often bring together residents with different viewpoints. Can you share how you approach collaboration and respectful discussion when opinions differ?
Well, that's what makes the world go around, right? Uh, so, and I think that's what I talked about earlier is consensus, uh, that, that shapes the consensus is getting a dissenting opinion, uh, and sometimes very vocal. Uh, might be a minority, but we, I think as a commission, we've done a pretty good job of hearing from those people and, um, allowing that to sway decisions, you know? And at the end of the day, we don't, we don't make decisions, right? You know, the process, we make recommendations to council, but I think that's affected what, what we've, uh, tried to represent from the community.
It's my turn, right? So what unique perspective, skills or experiences do you think you would bring to this committee? And what do you hope to accomplish during your term if appointed?
I think it's been shaped a lot by my experience with the NCP, the NCIP all these years and just recognizing the need for getting, getting the input of the neighborhood. And, you know, I represent the NCIP to the association, so that kind of gives me that, you know, voice to the governance of the neighborhood. So just that interaction, that community interaction and just that experience, I think, will help me going forward to advocate for what we feel, you know, is important. And again, not just my neighborhood, but for the city at large, you know, recognizing what council and, and the government says, hey, here's our budget situation. You know, you heard me at one of the more recent meetings going, yeah, it's insanity to keep adding more projects to this when we can't even get to what's been backlog for years. So let's maybe make some adjustment this year. And so that's, and in our neighborhood, we don't typically have a lot, usually one or two every cycle. So we don't have any this year, we didn't put it in, just recognizing, hey, it's maybe time to back, clear the backlog and get those. So I think those are the, the kind of things I'll bring to the committee going forward.
All right, well, good. Well, thank you very much for your time and your interest in serving the city of Monterey. We truly appreciate the effort you've made to be here and your willingness to contribute to our community. City staff will be following up with you after we complete all interviews and our plan is to announce the appointments and selections at the November 18th council meeting. So thank you and wish you the best.
It's a pleasure. Yes, sir. Appreciate you.
And then there was one.
He, he said he would get here soon.
No worries. I mean, his appointment wasn't until 4:15, so we're a whole 35 minutes ahead of when he was supposed to be here. Somebody else left their head in.
How was your trips?
Turn from recess. Thank you, Justin, for coming and joining us here early.
Absolutely.
Um.
Is it me?
So Justin here, Justin Loza is put his name in the hat for planning commission and he is in district four. And with that, good afternoon, sir, and welcome.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for being here today and for your interest in serving the community through one of our cities, boards, commissions, or committees. I'm Tyler Wimson, Mayor, joined by Vice Mayor Gino Garcia. We truly appreciate the time and thought you've put into applying and your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. This is a public meeting. We'll be conducting brief interviews with each applicant. Each interview will last about 15 minutes and we have six questions we'd like to ask to help us stay on schedule and make sure we cover everything. We'd appreciate it if you could keep your responses succinct and focused. And with that, go ahead and get started.
And just so you know, you have questions posted right in front of you for your reference there.
Sounds good.
Thank you for being here. First question is, how did you first hear about this volunteer opportunity? And why do you think you should be chosen to serve on this committee?
I heard about all the commissions. I learned a lot in the First City Academy that just ended. And I learned a lot about the city and how it runs in general. And are you interviewing or is this group also?
We are. They're just public.
Okay, okay. Sorry.
No, you're good.
Um. Yeah, and so that's where I learned about it. And I was just really blown away by how the city works. I had no idea exactly the interconnections and how decisions get made and things like that. And now I have a really good sense, I think, at least generally. So that is how I learned about it. And I was meaning to apply and get my application in and, you know, work just got in the way a little bit, but I got it in at the last minute there. Thank goodness. They were amendable to me on that one. And why should I be chosen? Why do you think you should be chosen to serve on this committee? I am a very committed person when I have a mission in front of me that I'm very passionate about. And I have a good judgment, I think. I've been learning to make good decisions in my business. And I think I take, I think I'm really good at seeing multiple perspectives, multiple stakeholders' perspectives, and being able to pull that together and hearing views from others and, and making a judgment on what a good decision would be. I think that is one of my strengths.
Can you share one? Oh, wait, did I just jump it to? Was it your turn?
Yeah, yeah, it's me. Can you share one volunteer experience and how it affected you? What did you learn from it? And how might that experience shape your approach if selected?
Hmm. Well, I am the president of Veterans for Peace, which is a volunteer organization. And we have a chapter here in, in Seaside, actually, but it's a Monterey chapter. And I've been in it since 2016. And I've, I've learned there how nonprofit, where nobody gets paid anything, how decisions get made in, in groups that really need to incorporate a whole membership. And so I learned a lot in that experience along the way. I became president once. And that was a really great learning experience. You know, I, you know, coming into the term president, you think like, okay, I'm gonna make some decisions here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make some decisions that I think in my judgment are good decisions. But in a nonprofit and when you're dealing with community and stakeholders, it's not just what the president thinks and what they, they want to do. You have to really listen what the board wants and what the actual membership wants. And then you make your decisions and judgment in consideration of that. So that affected me in my leadership and how I deal with things because going from a corporation where it's, you know, it's essentially authoritarian, you know, like whatever the decisions are, but, you know, you still have to listen to your staff, but ultimately make a decision. Going to a nonprofit volunteer experience is a whole nother animal. And I learned how to really not be so. I guess, um. I guess, I don't know what the right word would be, not so. If I disagree with anybody, I, and I thought I was right. I usually just made my decision and tried to make my best explanation. But I'm open to being influenced. I think that was the biggest takeaway, to being influenced in my decisions by others. That may not, may not be exactly what I would do, as long as it's a good explanation. And how would it shape my approach here if selected? I think those skills would come, would lend itself well in this experience. I was reading up on, on the minutes for the past couple of years. And I see how this commission listens to the community deeply, listens to the planners, it listens to the public. And, and then ultimately makes a decision. So I think I'm well suited and positioned to jump right into that culture environment.
I, I think you just mentioned it, but just to confirm.
Yeah.
Have you attended meetings for the planning commission?
I've never attended a planning commission meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what aspects of the committee, of the committee's work interest you?
I think that the general plan is a vision. And making sure that that vision comes to reality is really exciting, actually. And so if we have the ability to make sure that what happens here helps get us toward that mission is very exciting. I think that planning, as I put in my statement, is creating the future when you think about it. And we're creating our future here. And I just, the prospect of that is very exciting.
Okay. And then each board or commission has a regular meeting schedule. Does your schedule allow you to commit to attending these meetings? And for the planning commission, it meets the second and fourth Tuesday of each month at four and seven. And then just a little bit of a note, the architecture review committee is being disbanded and it's combining with the planning commission. So that will make the meetings run longer into the evening.
Yes, my schedule allows for it since I own my business. You know, I think my flexibility today was showed that I can be very flexible in my work. You know, I make my own schedule. And over the past six years of my volunteer experience, I got to a point where work consumed me and I had no time for volunteer experience. Like, I thought I had no time. But the work is so important that you have to make time. And make it work with your work, life, and volunteer experience. So I have no issues with the scheduling.
Awesome.
Yeah.
These boards and commissions often bring together residents with different viewpoints. Can you share how you approach collaboration and respectful discussion when opinions differ?
Good question. Let me just read it real quick. Well, I, I always like to get everybody's, include everybody, make sure that everyone has the ability to give input. And I have a motto I follow is people support what they help create. And I'd love to make sure that everyone's ideas are taken and considered visually or in an analysis presented back to them to show like what I heard and how I understand what they're saying. And, and then maybe even, and if I have to disagree or agree, at least I give my perspective of why I disagree or agree in general. That's a general collaborative approach. But I, I do have, I follow problem solving techniques. I don't know if it would work here or not. Actually, it might, but you know, how you collect input from the community in a structured way is really important. Because, you know, everybody can give input, but if you don't take that input and analyze it and make sense of it, then it's not going to go anywhere. It's not actually going to contribute towards any meaningful progress in my eyes. So I always implement that in my, in my work and also in my volunteer work that I do. It's very collaborative, highly collaborative, I'd call it. I have a video of a client that just gave us a kudos recently. And one of the key things he said in there is Justin's and their team's ability to collaboratively involve the whole of the client. It's a 3,000 person company from the top all the way to the bottom.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's me. What unique perspective, skills, or experiences do you think you would bring to this committee? What would you hope to accomplish during your term if appointed?
Hmm.
Like you kind of answered this question already.
A little bit. Um. I'll just, yeah, reiterate the skills. I think I bring, I have a public administration degree, master of public administration. And in that program, that's where I learned all my collaborative skills, right here at the Middlebury Institute. And I would bring those skills, my active listening skills, really hearing people. And what they're saying, paraphrasing back to them, what they're saying, so they know that I understand what they're trying to say in general. Those are some really important basic skills, but I think make big difference in general. I am on a national committee. I think I put that in my statement as well for Veterans for Peace. So we're coordinating across chapters in every single state. And I think that big picture and, and dealing with different stakeholders in that way is a great experience to bring into this as well. And what do I want to hope to accomplish in my term? Let me think for one second. Um, you know, I think safety of, of the, of the residents is really important to me. And I saw the cannabis topics that were being discussed and I'm very, I'm very against it. And I think that I would, I know that there is an, is a reason why we're looking at that. It brings in revenue, but it's also killing future generations by impacting people's bodies. And, and how they, and also like with their children, or maybe they can't have children in some cases, things like that. So that's really important to me. So I would, I would probably like to try to limit in my ability, any expansion of cannabis. I think that's what I'd like to accomplish in my life.
To me?
None.
Maybe it is. I don't remember.
You all know it now at this point.
Well, thank you very much for your time and your interest in serving the city of Monterey. We truly appreciate the effort you've made to be here and your willingness to contribute to our community. City staff will be following up with you after we complete all the interviews. Our plan is to announce the appointments and selections at the November 18 city council meeting. Thank you again. And all the best to you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate your time and for hearing me out.
For showing up early.
Absolutely. Yep. My pleasure. Take care, Gino.
Okay. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everybody.